We're ready. Morning, everyone, and welcome to the December 6th Board of Supervisors meeting. I hope everyone had a good holiday. And so we're going to go ahead and move forward with our agenda. Call this meeting to order and as customary, we'll start with a moment of silence. And I don't know if anyone else has one?
Yes.
Okay, and I have one too, so I'll let you go first Supervisor Simon.
Do a moment of silence for Emile Van Leuven. He left us two Tuesdays ago in the afternoon. He's behind a lot of family members and we just want to wish his family heartfelt condolences.
And I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Frank Parker. Frank Parker is a proud Vietnam veteran of the 25th Infantry Division. I met Frank in 2018 at the gas station where he was in a lively discussion with some folks that were taking their time in the line and taking up two spaces. And I'll tell you what, Frank had a very spirited mentality and that's where we became friends and worked with him and the veterans. Anytime there was a veterans event, he was there to assist. He was very proud of that attribute and I knew he was a Vietnam veteran by the way. He talked to those five guys and I had no sense of fear whatsoever. So he will dearly be missed in Lake County and so, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Green pen, I gotta do that, man. Moment of silence to honor the 2,403 Americans who swore to support and defend the U.S. Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and who laid down their lives at Pearl Harbor on December 7th, 1941.
Thank you for that. That's a good one. Jesse, do you think you could lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Sure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And next will be our consideration of extra items not appearing on the agenda. Is there anything that anybody has on that? Not seeing any. We'll move on to our approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are commonly non-controversial items, but if somebody from the board wants to pull it for further discussion or from the public, we can go ahead and do so. Is there any consent agenda items that need to be pulled? I'll go ahead and open it to the public and see if there's anyone that would like to pull from that area. Not seeing any, so I'll go ahead and entertain action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.13.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries and we are at 6:04 or 9:05. Why did I say 6:04? Anyhow, let's see, I think we have a 7.4 could be something we do briefly.
Which one?
7.4, consideration of following advisory board appointments and that's a geothermal advisory committee. It looks like there is four vacancies.
But there's only, it seems like there's three to meet one of the criteria and there's only two vacancies in that criteria because there's some that's supposed to be Anderson Springs and two that are supposed to be Cobb and it looks like we have three from Cobb.
Okay. So Susan?
Scott Harder has requested that this item be pulled and I'll let him share with you why.
Correct, yeah. Actually Supervisor Pyska was going to pull it, but she's not here this morning. So we are currently researching the formation of the committee and how members were appointed to the committee. I've been working with Anita Grant County Council for about two months on that now. So it appears that these committee members historically in the past were appointed at a department head level, not at a board level. So we're just trying to sort through that.
Okay, all right. And it looks like I had a note, so it says the same thing. So we'll pull this for a later date, but we'll still open it up one more for the, one more time for the public, so in case there's somebody.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to discuss this item? Right, so I'll bring it back to the board and Michael?
Yeah, just real quick, I know it's going to come back, but I did have a question on why the applicants did show some geothermal income. I didn't know if there was an economic conflict of interest there, so maybe that's something that could be researched as you're bringing that back to.
All right. With that, we will go ahead and pull this until the next meeting or whenever that is. All right, so we are now at 9:07 and we can go to our 6.1 public input. And if there's anybody that has any public input that they would like to discuss that's not on the agenda, please come up and speak. We'll give you three minutes. Just know that we cannot comment at this time as it's not on the agenda. Also, there's a document you need to fill out if you're in the chambers to ensure we have your name and information on the record. So is there anybody in the chambers that would like to speak during public input? Also, I'm looking online to see if there's anybody and I'm not seeing anybody, so I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for, to move forward on our agenda and we'll close public input at this time. And our first item's at 9:15, so we have eight minutes.
Calendars?
Calendars, okay. So we'll go ahead and start with our calendars. Any volunteers?
I'll go.
Supervisor Sabatier.
All right, opening my calendar right now. So this week I'll be preparing for upcoming PEG meeting. Thank you to the board for approving the contract. So now we're going to go ahead and go through the approval process of purchasing the equipment and hoping to get that as soon as possible. Let me see, just a reminder so the board's aware, I think it's been brought to the board already, but just repeating information, we did get an extension to the Middle Creek restoration project so that we have until, I believe, 2028 now? I hope that's correct, but I believe that's 2028 to expend the $15 million. Just yesterday, we saw that we have close to a half dozen that are waiting for state approval and there's also three or four contracts to purchase properties that are going to be coming to the Board of Supervisors because it's already gone through the approval process. So things are moving slowly but still moving and we still have the capability of time, we have the time to continue and fulfill the requirements of the project. So moving that forward, I know that I brought a, the idea to the board here, wanted to get approval before bringing any kind of financial stuff about a regional skate park in the city of Clear Lake and using the cannabis dollars that I have that have been earmarked for District 2. We have received RFPs for that project and I will be discussing that with the city of Clear Lake tomorrow. Then, once one has been chosen, it will be brought back here. We'll show you the list of all the bidders, why we chose the one that we chose, and then go through the approval process for the consideration of approving appropriations for that RFP so we can go ahead and move forward with the design process. I have a Hope Rising meeting on Thursday and then a navigation meeting on Friday. Very small amount of meetings right now that are on my calendar. I do want to say thank you to IT, Shane French, and Kathy Lecatos. Hopefully I said the last name correctly, I believe I did. I brought to the board a while ago a database. We needed to, we kind of hit a couple of hurdles over the course of trying to implement the database within our network. One of those hurdles was the connection to the information of our parcels. We want to make sure that we don't break the integrity of the original database and so now what we're doing is we're going to be linking directly to the GIS map, which has all the information of the parcels that gets updated every so often. Therefore, the database will also be updated every so often with all that information. This week, I plan to be in the office to work on finalizing that so that I can tweak the database that I created to be able to utilize those new, those new queries that were created by Kathy Lecatos. And again, thank you very much to her for her help and assistance on getting us to where we are. So hopefully, hopefully by next week, that will be accomplished and then we can take a look at a quick test on how that works. And I do know that there's been outreach from code enforcement requesting that, is this done and completed? So obviously, they're still looking for using this because of the potential efficiencies that are built in. So that is something that I'll be doing this week in the office and then coming back on Monday and have a Hope Rising meeting, meeting with our, I believe I'm going to be taking part in a housing land use CSAC meeting on Monday. And so we'll see about switching our meeting between myself and CAO Parker, but we'll make that work. I have a PEG board meeting that Monday as well and then our meeting on the 13th. And I think that's all that I have. Actually, if you don't mind, real quick, I know there's been a lot of conversation about our registrar voters and the timeline that it takes to finalize all of our and certify our elections. I want to say thank you to the registrar voters. We're waiting for people who have faults within their mail-ins where their signature doesn't match, their address doesn't match, or there's no signatures. And the fact that we're still waiting is we want everyone's vote to be able to count rather than shutting it down early where their vote does not count. And I want to, I want to provide appreciation for that because I think everyone should have their vote counted and not cut short early. And we do have 30 days by state law to be able to certify and we need to make sure to provide the timeline so that people have the ability to fix their vote and make sure that it gets counted. And while it does take time, I appreciate the fact that we want to get as many of those votes counted and go through the process correctly. So looking forward to the final results and want to thank the registrar voters for the work that they've done.
All right. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Don't have a huge calendar right now, but let's see. Looks like I may have Children's Council tomorrow, Mental Health Advisory Board on Thursday. Got the agenda. Also on Thursday, just to inform the board and staff, I have started initiating some conversations with California Cannabis Authority, inquiring about potential membership and some of the services that might be available to us through membership. I'm going to have another conference call with them on Thursday and I'll be probably bringing an item back in January so that the board can have input on that. On Friday, I'm attending a webinar regarding Care Court. This is a new state program that we won't be in the first round, but the first, first set of counties, the first cohort that will be kickstarting this has been selected among the small rural counties is Glenn County. It's an ambitious program addressing some of the most difficult behavioral issues of some of the people in our community, those who suffer from schizophrenic disorders. It's a heavy lift involving the courts and the counties and behavioral health. It will be a challenge, I believe, to implement locally, so I want to, I want to tune into this process sooner than later so that when it does come time for us to start diving into Care Court, we come armed with lots of good information. I have completed basically all of my department head orientations with, I'll call them the big three and their law enforcement, so I'm looking forward to my future meeting with Sheriff Brian Martin, hopefully before the 30th, probation and the District Attorney's Office. So I know Carolyn has reached out to schedule some of those, but haven't heard back. I would like to get those done before Christmas if at all possible, so shout out to any department heads listening on that front. And I think that's about all I have right now. Oh, wait, Ag Advisory Committee, I attended my first meeting of that yesterday. Super impressed, super excited. They're very engaged, very motivated. Like all of our advisory committees though, we have some organizational stuff, Brown Act stuff. We are reaching the end of our teleconference authorizations under AB 361. Turns out, a lot of our committees didn't necessarily get up to speed on getting those resolutions passed, so I have been working to encourage our councils to get up speed on AB 361, even as we get ready toward the end of February to transition to whatever the next paradigm is going to be under AB 2449, I think. And that will involve a transition back to some hybrid status where it can't be all Zoom all the time. We are going to have to have some in-person meeting places, some, some attention paid to proper posting of agendas at those meeting places. So we'll plow through that in the first part of next year. But just wanted to give a shout out to all our hardworking advisory councils that start next year won't be all Zoom all the time and we're going to have to adjust our agenda and noticing practices accordingly. Thank you.
Supervisor Simon?
Court meeting today, whenever they finish, so don't have anything on the calendar tomorrow, but Thursday, do have the South Deal Committee meeting, but I also have, I got two things booked and I don't know how they started overlapping, but the geothermal committee. So I think tomorrow I'll be attending, or Thursday I'll be attending the first few minutes of the South Deal Committee meeting and then attending the in-person geothermal committee meeting. So I don't know if you're planning on attending the South Deal Committee?
I'll do, yes.
Okay, excellent. And then so Thursday night have the math meeting, Friday morning CAO, looks like there's a tree mortality meeting on Friday and then Friday night be at the Lower Lake Parade. So we're doing some judging and announcing or whatever, so it's going to be a good event there that starts on Saturday or Friday for the Lower Lake Parade, Christmas Parade or Celebration. And then Saturday is Christmas in Middletown. That'll be happening, I think, from 4 to 8, I think is what it is and, you know, in the Middletown area. And then back here on the 13th for our Tuesday meeting.
All right.
Thought we had Ava, but that's next, or LTA, but that's next week.
Yeah. All right, so tomorrow, agenda review in the morning and then I'm on my way to Sacramento for the RCRC meeting. Just notification, there'll be an election tomorrow for the leadership of RCRC and I actually submitted a candidacy for second vice chair, so we'll see how that goes. I'll let everyone know the meeting after. Basically, what the second vice chair is, is there's, there's basically four chairs. There's the past chair, current chair, first vice chair, vice chair, and then second vice chair. And it's basically the leadership that meets kind of like the board out of all of the 38 counties and that when the chair is actually in the position of the chair, the first meeting is done in their county. So that's, that's one of the goals that I have too and also just to be a part of it because the people on the leadership that serve are privy to a lot more than of the board position. So we'll see how that goes. Thursday, South Deal, well, actually Wednesday evening is Earth. Hopefully I get back in time for that. And there's also a veterans dinner that I, I'm trying to juggle those, but I'm trying to get back in time to make both and make appearances at both. Thursday, South Deal meeting, like Supervisor Simon said. So Friday, I'm going to do the same webinar that Michael Green, you're doing Supervisor, so with Care Court, I seen that and I registered for it as well. Monday, CAO meeting and then back here Tuesday for the Board of Supervisors meeting. And with that, we will go on to our next item, which is our 6.2 public hearing, sitting as the Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors. Approve and adopt an ordinance amending Section 721(c) of the Sewer Use Ordinance. Appendix A of the Lake County Ordinance Code, increasing sewer use fees for all properties that discharge to the Middletown wastewater treatment plant excluding Anderson Springs. And we will welcome Scott Harder, our Special District Administrator, and Jesus Salmerin, Jesse Salmerin. And the gentleman coming up, sir?
He is Anthony. He's with the consultant, the rate analysis study.
Anthony, what's his last name?
Iluski.
Okay, Anthony Iluski. All right, the floor is yours.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We are here today as part of the Proposition 218 process. This is the public hearing part of the process. This has been going on for a little bit of time. We contracted through Cal World Water with Robert D. Niehaus Incorporated to perform a revenue study, a cost of services study and a rate analysis for our Middletown Sewer District. Anthony's here to discuss that a little bit in detail. Study was completed, it was reviewed, it was brought to the board for consideration. We have noticed our customers 45 days in advance as required by Proposition 218. The notice for the public hearing was posted in the paper and so today we're at the point of coming to you today and, and hearing input from the public, hearing feedback from the public for the proposed rates, reviewing the process overall and then evaluating where we are at as far as written protests. So for the Proposition 218 to succeed and the proposed rates to be implemented, there has to be less than 50% written protests from our active customers. We have approximately, well, I think it's exactly 522 customers at the time of the mailing, which is 50% plus one puts us at 262 written protests. If we receive 262 written protests, then we're not having a discussion about raising rates anymore. That's a moot point and we'd go on to figuring out how to manage the district without raising the rate. So with that brief introduction, I'll turn it over to Anthony. He's got a short presentation and then we'll answer questions you may have and then I suggest opening it up for the public hearing.
No, it's good to go.
Kim might drive it, I'm sure.
Good to go. Got you, thank you. So as you mentioned, this is the Proposition 218 hearing and thanks for letting me present this information to you. So some background on Proposition 218, he did mention the 50% plus one, but the proposition was originally voted to allow local communities to have control over the implementation of different types of fees and rates that are done by local agencies, utilities, for example. And just a few key points are that the revenues from the fees cannot exceed the funds equal to provide the service that the fee is being charged for. Fees cannot be used for any other purpose than for the one that the fee is being charged and the amount of the fee can't exceed the proportional cost to any individual customer. So there has to be equity. And he mentioned the 45 days and the notices themselves have to contain the date and location of the hearing, which is here, how to protest the hearing and that's in writing, and the reason the fees are required. Invalid protests will be counted at the end of the hearing. And so just some background on the district, as I understand it, there's about 70,000 feet of sewer main, three lift stations, and there's currently 540 customers, mostly residential, a few multifamily and a few commercial. So the purpose of this rate study is to ensure that there's going to be sufficient funding for the day-to-day operations for the Lake County Sanitary District Middletown branch, that the rates that are developed are compliant with Prop 218 and those are the few items that I mentioned, they have to be equitable between the customer types and project long-term. And this is only a five-year rate study, which is allowed under Proposition 218, so we provide a recommendation for five years of rate adjustments in this study. So briefly, your current rates, they're split up into a few different customer classes. There's residential, additional, which would be additional residential units beyond the first, motel rooms, restaurants, laundromats, schools, beauty shops, service stations, which all, the restaurant, those three commercial types are all currently being billed the current rate. Schools are per student and short order was additional seats within a restaurant. When we looked at the current revenues based on the rates that you have currently set, we're projected around 170,000 per year as far as revenues are concerned. Increases slightly because of potential customer growth. As far as the expenses based on the operating, and this is only the operating and maintenance expenses that we received, you're currently collecting about half of what is needed to fund the day-to-day operations of the district. And the negative balances increase because of current inflation. And when, at the time of the study, these are the units of inflation that we projected. They are slightly lower than we're seeing currently based under the current inflation. However, we do think that they will return to normal levels in future years, so it should balance out. So currently, if we look at the future projection of, this is cash on hand, it goes negative very quickly because of the negative net balances seen in the budget. This produces no reserves, which is a key metric for the future success of a utility system. It funds no capital projects and eventually there's no money to continue maintaining the system whatsoever. So we recommended five years of adjustments because of the dire need, which we believe for the adjustments. We front-loaded about 100% of initial first-year adjustment and then it goes down closer to the actual inflation rate after that. This does fund operations and by the end of the study period of five years, it will have contributed approximately 35,000 a year to capital reserves and will reach a target of 10% of annual revenues for the O&amp;M reserve. And this shows the reserve funding, the target balances with the revenue adjustment. So the most important part to ensure that it's Proposition 218 compliant is to provide a cost-of-service analysis and the cost-of-service analysis allocates the cost directly to each customer type based on the amount of strain they put on the system. So we use, when we do these type of analysis, numbers that are given by the State Water Resources Control Board as estimates. So the population count in each of the residential and additional are based on census data, so we found an estimate of about 2.59 people per household. The state says that in general, people have about 50 gallons per capita per day of sewer flow. And if you go down the list here, you can see the count is the number of stays in the hotel room and the amount of flow that is, and this is annually, so it's half of the stay, basically, if they were half full. Restaurants have about 45 services a day, which generate about seven gallons per capita and farther down the list, washers do about 100 gallons per day at a laundromat. And so when you look at the percentage of total flow on the right-hand side there, residential customers generate about 61% of the total flow, or I mean 81% if you include additional. And then the second highest would be the school, which has a certain number of students who generate a certain number of flow per capita per day. Sewer strength is based on milligrams per liter of bio-oxygen demand and total suspended solids. The State Water Resources Control Board also gives estimates as to what each type of commercial property or residential property contributes to the system and sewer strength is one of the main cost-of-service components because it's representative of the strain that individual types of customers put on the system. So the same analysis, if you multiply the contributed strength by the actual flow of the customers, then you get the percentage of the strength value on the right-hand side. And again, because of this high amount of residential customers, they contribute the majority of sewer strength component to the cost of service, with restaurant being the second highest because of the fats, oils and, fats, oils and grease that they put down the system, that they contribute as suspended solids. So once we do the allocation between all of the different types of customers, we get a total allocation of the required revenue. The required revenue basically equals the cost, the O&amp;M cost to provide service plus the, any capital expenses or other expenses and any reserve contributions that you have. So the total allocation is 81.7% residential, followed by school, et cetera, down the list till we get to beauty shops, which actually have a very small proportion of the total allocation. And then you divide this amount by the number of bills and you get the allocated per bill and you do a bi-monthly bill, so it would be $59 per residential customer every other month, 200 for restaurant. month, 200 for restaurant, the service station, the 205. And the units have stayed the same, so motel rooms are being charged 1182, schools per student 594 in the first year, and the laundromat is charged billed 40.19 per room. And Scott was kind enough to put together this comparison of local sewer rates between Middletown, which currently would be 1630 a month, and would increase to 2968 a month for residential customers, which is still well below the regional average for similar Finally, just a few additional thoughts that districts cannot make a profit, so any rate increases are definitely needed based on the financial plan. If, for some reason, costs do not increase the way that we're projecting, or if additional funding can be found, if the board approves five years of rates now, at any time in the future, they can choose not to implement one of the rate increases. Proposition 218 only requires you to have them set ahead of time, and that gives you a maximum. You could even increase them by less in the future if you decide that additional revenue is not needed. If you don't make this change now, if you don't implement these revenue adjustments, then you will actually just have to pay more in the long run to catch up with the deficit. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. One point that I didn't make earlier, and I think the board is aware of that, the rates in Middletown have not been adjusted or changed since they were established in 1995. So we do recognize that this is a pretty dramatic increase, especially for the first year in the proposed rates structure, but that is to catch up with the operation that has been happening out of reserves and the deferred maintenance that has happened within the system. We're at a dire position, and we really need these rates to offset where we're at and where we're going moving forward. It's been 27 years since we've seen a rate increase, so yes, the first-year rate increase for residential is proposed to go up 100%, but our PG&E costs since 1995 have gone up 200%. Our labor costs have gone up over 300%. We went back and looked at our costs, you know, 27 years ago compared to what they are today, and we've seen a significant increase on the cost side. So it's time to try and get the revenues to represent what we need to operate in a responsible fashion.
Is there any? Oh, yeah, that's right. I've just had a quick question before we do the swearing. Is there any initiatives to work on the PG&E costs, for example, any type of solar or anything like that?
We're always looking for ways to offset our PG&E costs. PG&E is one of our largest costs, that and labor. Pumping happens 24/7 to move the wastewater to the processing plant, which then also operates 24/7 typically to process that waste stream. But, yeah, we have solar in the system already. We are looking, we tried unsuccessfully to secure some S-Gip funding for batteries to help shift the time of use in our PG&E costs, but we're always looking for ways to reduce our costs.
You read my mind. That was my next question, so we'll go from there. All right, so anything else from the board? I think we have Supervisor Green.
Yeah, this may have been outside the scope of the study. I imagine it was, but City Lakeport recently did both their water and their wastewater rates. And the study there, comparing and contrasting, it may be a city mouse, country mouse kind of thing, but the list of commercial rates seemed pretty granular, I mean, from beauty shops to gas stations, whereas in the rates we just adopted in Lakeport, basically, they said it was commercial, and then came up with two tiers of basically heavier uses and light uses. And residential, they parsed between meter sizes and the type of residential unit, so different rates for, for example, apartments in a multifamily situation as opposed to a single-family residence. So I know it probably wasn't part of the rate study to examine the commercial side of things and how granular it was, and if those charge throughs made a lot of sense, but is this type of granularity common among, I don't know, I don't want to say it, but modern wastewater studies? Because again, we haven't updated the rates since '95. We probably haven't taken a look at the rate structure itself since '95. So I just wonder if there's, it probably wasn't part of the rate study per se, but is this common?
So it is very common to have multiple use categories for commercial customers. The increased granularity increases the equity between types of customers. What was the second half of the question? As far as residential customers, we weren't, the census had the same amount of people per type of residence for multifamily as well as, at least close enough between multifamily and single-family residential in Middletown as far as population per household. So that was the number that we used for the residential, and there wasn't enough variety to justify having two different types of residential customer class.
To add a little bit more to that, too, because this is not water-based, it's wastewater-based, we weren't concerned with looking at water meter size. We don't have the water district in Middletown. That's a separate utility district, so basing sewer usage on water meter size wasn't really relevant in this particular case. And also, in some of our other sewer districts, as you noted, we have more modern rate structures, and there are like high-strength commercial, medium-strength commercial, low-strength commercial, so we see that. But we also do see the granularity by end-user type as well, because that tends to influence the strength and quantity of the waste flow.
Supervisor Sabati, then Supervisor Simon right after.
I got a quick question. I don't see it anywhere as far as the rules and regulation for 218, but it was an interesting comment that we all received. Is there any mandatory need to provide bilingual notification, since we do have people who live in the area that do not speak English, but yet have the same rights to either protest or approve this or provide comment or anything like that? Just curious. I don't see it within the law, but just wanted to ask.
No, there's not a legal requirement. In some of our other mailings, depending on the threshold of population, there are certain requirements for utility districts or utility companies. We don't meet those thresholds currently in Middletown. And we do have bilingual translators in the office on staff, and we have not experienced any issues communicating with our Spanish-speaking customers historically.
Okay. And I also looked at your notification that you provided us in the attachments. I didn't see anything that said if you need translation, just hoping in the future that either A, we can provide a bilingual notification just to make sure that the large majority of people know exactly what they're receiving, or at least something that says for translation, contact, because I didn't see that in there. So just my suggestion for the future to make sure that we get as many people involved and to participate to say yes or no.
Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that. I completely agree with that suggestion in the future as we move forward with it. I will say, just a comment, you already answered it, on the meter size on the water, obviously, there has been a rate increase with Caliomi Water District, I think in the past five years, somewhere in that area. There were some, you know, some processes that went through, and, you know, so it's been done. Like I've said before, as we hear the comments today and everything, there is no good time to raise fees, but this is a conversation that's needed. It's been a long coming, something hopefully we learn as a board and as we move forward, that putting something in and not taking the necessary steps over time really compounds the pain that's felt by the customers. And just learning from example here as we move forward as a board that we do these, we look at these fees, we look at these things, they're looked at every five years. I think that's what we got going forward here, so I think we're moving in the right direction. We do have a new sewer district down in our area, too, which is Anderson Springs, so as long as we stay on that path and look at those things that, you know, hopefully we can ease the pain of these. Like I said, again, raising fees is never the easy discussion, but it is something that we need to do to operate these facilities, so.
All right, so from there, we'll go ahead and do the swearing. And if there's anybody online that...
Don't get to swearing.
No, we don't.
No, often, generally, for public hearings, you will, but this is a protest hearing, so swearing in is...
Thank you, Anita. And so with that, then we'll go ahead and open public input and go from there. So if you have a comment or you would like to come up and say something on this item, state your name for the record, and we'll start your three minutes, and we'll go from there.
Yes, thank you, sir. My name is Julia Bono. I wish to ask a number of questions. First of all, I'd like to ask why this huge 120... Oh, and I should just mention that I represent 50 people who have signed protest letters and which I had personally delivered here to the office. I could have had many, many more than 50 if we'd had a little bit more time, but unfortunately, we had very inclement weather over the weekend, and we had that many that I was able to personally oversee. So I'd like to ask why this huge 120% increase is being proposed to add an upgrade of 1,277 equivalent dwelling units to Middletown's waste management facility when the report's own estimate that we've seen is for a growth of less than 100 EDUs over a 10-year period until 2031, as shown in Figure 3. That's my first question. I also see no mention in the financial plan of historical data that we can use to put the projections shown in Figure 8 of losses into any kind of perspective. If we don't know where we've been, how can we assume that your projections are even, you know, in the right trending direction? I think along those lines, I think we had said that a portion of the rate rise will be going to build the utilities' reserves, but this will just be taking money out of Middletown's households' pockets when they need it most to combat recent cost of living increases. This comes at an absolutely horrendous time. I've spoken to so many people, and my husband, Carlos, who is bilingual, has spoken to many Hispanic people who did not know about this, who were not informed, who could not read the notice letter, and so were, you know, when we presented it to them, thankfully, he was able to do so in Spanish, they were horrified. We also spoke to many, many renters who were not able to get their landlord's signatures on these things fast enough. The landlords might have been out of the state, or they might have been not responsive in the sort of timeframe that we needed their letters to be produced by. So by not allowing renters, who are going to ultimately be footing the costs of these increases, to have a say in this protest, we're cutting out a large portion of the people who would otherwise have protested this increase. Finally, I would like to lodge a complaint about the need to protest this rate rise in writing rather than electronically. This is onerous. People have to pay for posters, they were, you know, they have to, there has to be a timeframe for delivery. You know, we could have done this electronically. We're in the modern era now, you know, things can be done electronically. This was also have helped with getting some of the landlords to participate and for people to be able to get a link sent to them via email. Is that my time?
Yes.
So I'd like those questions answered, please.
Thank you. So...
Are we responding? I don't know.
Yes, well, maybe we can move forward with a couple more if you think that we can address all of them at the same time, you think, or would you rather just address it right now?
I can respond, I think, as best I can, if I can recall them all. There was mention about the potential 1,076 EDU growth. That is a separate unrelated capital project, which is entirely grant-funded. If this rate increase goes through, that will demonstrate to the state that our revenue stream is stable for this district, and then they will award a $5 million grant for plant improvements. The population projections within the rate analysis were based on current growth trends, which we were seeing about 2% to 2.5%. So that was those. Gosh, I'm struggling to recall.
And as far as the renters and as far as the way to protest, I think that's within the law of Prop 218 that we have to follow.
Correct, exactly. Those are all within the Proposition 218 and California Code, so we are complying with that. As far as noticing requirements, how far out in advance we provide notice, the way that the response has to come in. So yes, those are all in compliance with California law.
All right. So with that, is there anyone in the chambers?
I think there was one more, historical data. I think that was another question.
Oh, for the, yeah, for the trend, I think, that Anthony's chart showed dipping into revenues and then being out of money. So we have provided the consultant our historical budgets, our analysis, our numbers for past and moving forward. So that's how we based those cost of services, that rate analysis, that fiscal analysis was, you know, what has the district been operating? What are the operating expenses? What are the revenues under the current rate structure? What are they projected to be under the increased rate structure? So.
And as well, the inflation, as it's said on the slide, is based on CPI data from the BLS and Construction Cost Index, which are reputable inflation sources.
Yeah, those are also the ones that we use for some of our other rates, which are tied to either a CVI or our capacity fees are charged, or they're tied to a construction cost index as well, so.
Okay. All right. Sir, if you'd like to come up, yes. State your name for the record, and we'll start your three minutes.
Yes, my name is Carlos Bono. I live in Middletown, and I'm a bilingual, I'm Mexican and American, I have dual nationality. I have been spending a lot of time with the Mexican community. Middletown is now predominantly Hispanic. Just, I did not find one person that spoke Spanish that had received the letters that were supposedly sent, and if they did receive them, they probably didn't read them. I talked to many people on the street, I got them to sign letters of protest. Unfortunately, most people are renters, and we would have needed more time to have them present the letters of protest to their landlord and to deliver them here. So I don't know if 540 letters were sent. I doubt that, but I think more time would be needed to make the protest effective for the Middletown community, which is now predominantly Hispanic. Another thing is that a bond was paid. When I moved to Lake County in 2002, a bond was paid off, and I was under the impression from the people that I was paying the mortgage to that the sewer rates would, the sewer would eventually go away, the payment for the sewer, we would get a nominal payment because of the payment of this bond. Now, I don't know the truth of this matter, I have not researched it in depth, but I think it's something to look into. I think that may be one of the reasons that the district was not predisposed in raising rates right away. They wanted to maybe let people forget about the bond payment. At any rate, that's all I have, and I would really like the consideration of the Mexican community in this, because they have absolutely no, I mean, they have no recourse, and they can't really say much if they don't have somebody to represent them. At any rate, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick point of clarification, if I could, from staff. Those people eligible to protest, in many cases, I'm hearing about renters and especially in apartment buildings, who got noticed in a multifamily setting? Is it the apartment owner, and that is the only person allowed to protest? Or are individual people who absorb those pass-through costs from the property owner, do they have protest rights as well?
It's the property owner, and legally within the district, the property owner is ultimately responsible to pay. So in the situation where there are renters, if the renters default, the district has the ability to place a tax lien against the property. It's the property owner who's ultimately responsible for the bill, and they have protest rights.
And also, each parcel is only allowed one protest. So in a multifamily unit, if there's 30 rentals, there's still only one protest allowed per rental unit.
All right. I see a hand up in the, go ahead, come on up. Yes. Joan, if you'd like to come up.
Joan Moss, I want to know if Middletown's population has increased or decreased. I want to know what allowances are made... want to know what allowances are made for those who send treated wastewater up to the geothermal wells. Does Middletown participate in this? I want to know how many people in Middletown are employed by the geothermal development, and I want to know how the low-income people are treated as opposed to the high-income people. I just don't see this as being fair or equitable. We all use the bathroom. We all are different. I don't think this is, anyway, a 420 rate increase. It's unbelievable that there wouldn't be, with all the emergency funds available, with all the drought. Do you have a drought management plan, sir? Is there any consideration of the drought that is in effect, even though we have the rains? And is this a program sponsored by the California Department of Water Resources? I just heard about this today, and I'm just mentioning some things to consider. Thank you.
Population of Middletown, I have no idea if it's gone up or down.
I don't have that answer either. I'll try and get that for Joan, obviously, since the Valley Fire. You know, I think there was, when we did redistricting, there was some changes that were made, so I don't have that information. Maybe Bruno's looking at data, so he may have an answer. I just do want to say that there is not a 420% increase. Yes, there is an increase that is going to happen, but if you could get that out there correctly.
It's roughly 100% correct, yeah, for residential customers in the first year.
I believe it's 116 and a half. We want to be specific over the course of the next five years.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to check in on that. And if the board doesn't mind, I am looking at 2020 census for Middletown, California. It says between 2019 and 2020, the population of Middletown, California declined from 739 to 725, 1.89% decrease, and it also states that 9.24% of the population is Hispanic.
And to address some other Joan's questions or comments?
And I'm sorry to interrupt. That doesn't denote, if you're Hispanic, that you only speak Spanish. That just denotes your answer on the census of what your ethnicity is.
Ma'am, if you're going to speak, please come to the microphone. We can't take, like, statements from the back of the room. So if you come up and you want to restate something, we'll give you a short, brief time to make a statement. And so Joan, you have a couple seconds.
And if I may before...
Thank you. I want to know about federal lands.
If I may before...
One second, Joan.
If I may before...
Joan, let him speak, and then I'll let you speak.
I believe it says 91% is non-Hispanic white, 90.8% is non-Hispanic white. And again, this is the 2020 census. Just wanted to provide that data.
I also want to mention the Native American population on federal land. Are they considered differently? Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Go ahead, Supervisor.
Well, no, I can answer that directly for the Middletown Rancheria. No, we're, I hope we're not considered differently, but as we move through it, but we are part of the local...
You're a customer.
We are a customer. All of our residents on the Rancheria and also our businesses.
Ma'am, come on up.
Yes.
We pay the same rates.
Come to the micro, ma'am, come to the microphone and speak into it so we can hear.
2020 is not 2022. 2022, we have a very significant Hispanic population in Middletown. A lot of them are renters, and you can't go by the census data because sometimes they don't mention their ethnicity on the census reports.
Thank you for that. All right, is there anyone from the public that has more to say on this item? And I'm looking online. Is there anybody online? Do you have somebody?
No.
Okay. All right. I'll bring you back to the board and we'll move forward from there.
Obviously, just want to make sure, you know, we had the public comment conversation on, as we move forward with this. So we did get from Linda Deal Darms, the request to propose, postpone this for 30 days this time. I am personally, I am not prepared to do that as District One Supervisor. Appreciate the process we've gone through, but I would like to have some discussion with the board. As we went through this process, 100% increase, I know where we want to get to, so I wanted to have a conversation with the board. If we could talk about incremental steps as we move forward through that process. That's really what I'd like to address with the board. And if I can go directly to those, I'll try to pull that up. It was proposed to be 100% the first year, 6% the second year, and then 3.5%. I think the next couple of years, I'll, let me pull that up really quickly.
I think it's the next three years after that.
Next three years. And just, if you do an incremental, more balanced rate increase, you do have a higher overall increase, because you're going to be making up for that lost revenue in the first year. The 100% also was chosen because of the very, rather large negative net balance, even in this current fiscal year. You're collecting about half of the revenues we project of what you need to fund operations. So if you do do a longer-term more balanced rate increase...
Was not looking for a longer term.
I mean, a more balanced, say, 50%, 50%, 40%, 30%, just numbers, you will have a higher end, rate at the end of five years than you will if you do a higher increase initially.
Where, for, how does, how does that work? So...
So you begin with...
An earlier comment was, we're not sure where we're going 100% sure where we would be in the five years. Things could change, and we could look at rate adjustments. At three years from now, things could change. It could be lower than anticipated. So just if you could clarify that.
You can decrease rates anytime. As the Board of Supervisors, you just can't increase them past the amount that is recommended. We believe that our projections are accurate. So in the fact, in the case that they are accurate, then we believe that these are the rate adjustments that you will need. And...
So if you did a more gradual increase, then you've got the time value of money over that five years. So it's going to end up, at the end of the five years, the monthly rate or the bimonthly rate is going to have to be higher to account for the fact that you didn't have that increase in that additional revenue coming in at the beginning of this five-year series. That's what Anthony's saying. So that was a consideration when we looked at the various types of rate structures to move forward and put forward in the recommendation. One of them had a more gradual increase. However, it ended up with the end user, the customer, paying more on their monthly or bimonthly bill to still get to the same point at the end of the five-year period.
And we're going from 1632 to 29, or 1636 to 2936 monthly, or...
Monthly, but we buy, we bill bimonthly. So they will see a 5936 bill every other month.
All right. Okay, let me hear some discussion from the...
I believe Mike, yeah.
Yeah, Supervisor Green, go ahead.
Yeah, we had similar questions again when Lakeport did their rate study. And correct me if I'm wrong, if we tweak the rates too much, we kind of lose integrity of the rate study as a whole. But I think one of the reasons the big increase comes up front is we have zero reserve here, it sounds like, and so getting that first chunk of funds in that first year is mission critical, not only to meeting the district's expenses, but trying to meet the goals of what is actually required to have a capital reserve and to be a healthy district. I do get that there's sticker shock. I do also understand, and I want to reinforce the point, that it's been nearly 30 years since these rates have been adjusted, although the increase is scary in terms of the percentage. The overall rates are not out of, not out of whack in any way with what modern utilities are going for. And if I recall right, there's now a legal requirement that we have to come back every five years and do a rate study, so we can avoid the very type of situation we're facing here today. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. So I appreciate that there is concern over some sticker shock. Just as I supported in Lakeport, sometimes you've just got to bite the bullet and do what's right. I'm satisfied with the methodology of the study, and I'm satisfied with the proposed rates in the way that they are proposed.
Supervisor Sabatier.
I appreciate Supervisor Simon asking for discussion on what can we do to make this a little bit more palatable, because while the money amount might be small, it's still asking for taking more out of people's accounts in a time period where it's difficult to have more in our bank accounts. I also agree that there's never a good time to make an increase, but over the course of the last 27 years, had there been this 2% or 3% increase, we wouldn't be here at all, looking at this large number. And so, obviously, rectified in the future so that this doesn't happen again. But this is definitely, in a way, our doing by waiting so long to get to this point of recreating the rate structure. So here we are. While, do you have an idea, I know Supervisor Simon mentioned maybe 50% and then looking at another increase the following year. Do you know what the overall percentage might look like? You said it would be more. Is it 120? Is it 130? Is it 125? What is the overall percentage that would be the increase if we did reduce and kind of make that 100 staggered a little bit more than just happening in one single year?
I'm not certain. Anthony might have a wild guess or recollection, but...
Yeah, no, I'd have to actually type it up.
Yeah, and my understanding of the process, and I think Supervisor Green spoke to this, if we futz with this too much, we futz with the integrity of the study. What I would see, or what I envision, if the board is looking to ease into the rates in a more gradual fashion, we're not going to recoup what was recognized as what was needed for that five-year period. So the rate structure, as presented in the analysis, provides for some rebuilding of the reserves. If we gradually eased into this, I imagine that we could look at, you know, what is the dollar amount for the first year, and instead of going that, to that full dollar amount, you go to maybe 60% of it. Second year, you maybe go to 80% of the recommended rate, and maybe by the third year, you're at 100% of that recommended rate structure. Overall, that ends up leaving a shortfall in the five-year period, but I think that doesn't disturb the integrity of the rate analysis. It just means that we have to burn a little more reserves as we're building back up to a rate that can support operation of the system.
And you're looking at $35,000 maximum, or was that minimum per year to be placed into the reserves?
I think that's what we were planning as...
Was it minimum or maximum?
It was maximum, I think.
Maximum?
Yeah, it was, it was based on getting us back at the end of the five-year period up to a healthy reserve.
So potentially, if there is an urgent situation, you may be missing 70,000 or maybe 105,000 or something like that at the most, is that, that we may miss if we don't hit the 100, and then 6, and then 3.5, 3.5. And that's again, and if, you have to use it in the sense that it requires a specific requirement of you to have to use those reserves for that. If it's something that Supervisor Simon would like to see, and if the board, obviously, is interested, I'd love to see what that looks like to tweak the percentages a little bit, rather than kind of have an estimate of what that would look like. Because obviously, we're being told, and it makes sense, that if we don't do 100% on year one, and then so on and so forth, that you end up missing out on the recovery that's supposed to happen based on the fact that the fees are so low that there is no recovery. It's all at a loss every single year. So eventually, you'll get 120% increase rather than the 116 and a half, or maybe it's more of an increase. I'd like to know what that looks like if we choose to go that direction, rather than discussing it in a way that I can't have a tangible view of what that impact would be. Because if it's going to be 170% in the long run, now that's a much bigger impact that I would be against for that community to be impacted by such an increase. But if it's going to be just a slight increase and overall you get 120% versus 116 and a half, and you don't have to hit that same hurdle the first year, then I think that would be a debatable situation of what's the best way to move forward. But without that in front of me, it's hard for me to make any guess as to how we move forward, other than just what's been presented to us today.
I understand. And like I said, though, I think, and I'm not sure, I'd probably defer to county council on this, I would think that if we were proposing something, essentially restructuring this rate analysis, I'm not sure if that restarts the whole process.
Yeah, you do have to do another Proposition 218 hearing.
So if we were looking to ease more gradually into this, my recommendation would be that we just, we look at the dollar amounts for the first year, the second year, third year, implement those at a percentage. But at the end of the five years, we're not exceeding what the maximum recommended rate is. So we are not exceeding the analysis in the study that's already been done. We don't have to go through the process again because we've recreated a new rate analysis. We have just implemented what has been approved and what has been analyzed and is consistent with state law. We've implemented it at a lower level. As Anthony indicated, you at the board, if revenues were coming in higher, you at any time can implement at a lower level. You just can't exceed the level that's been identified.
Supervisor Simon, I don't know if we wanted to need it. Did you have something before Supervisor Simon, briefly?
If you're going to adjust in any way where the rates would, would be increased, where the fees, where the total amount paid by the rate tiers would be increased, I'd strongly recommend a new 218 process to describe that methodology. If you're doing what Mr. Harder says, where you're not changing anything except a percentage reduction, he's correct, that if you, if you reduce the fees in a 218 process, you're fine, but you may not increase them in any way.
Supervisor Simon.
Well, I appreciate the conversation today. You know, this has been a long coming. We've had natural disasters that have happened since 2015, the Valley, you know, the Valley Fire, you know, so we're years out. You know, when I first came on board, I know that this was one of the issues that was brought to me by your, Jan Kopinger, who sat in your position before you, and, you know, there was never a good time, especially during disasters, some of the worst times in people's lives, and they're still rebuilding from it. You know, I made a statement earlier that pushing things down the road. I appreciate the conversations that we've had today. Believe me, as I said, I'm a rate payer on this same system. 100% increase is never what you want to hear. You want to have those conversations. But kicking it down the road is not something I want to do either. I don't want to leave that as something, if I'm not here after the next term or the following term, that is not left for another supervisor to address this in the way that I'm being asked to do this at this point. So with all those questions, you know, being asked, my concerns, hearing the explanations and where we're going, I think Supervisor Green said it the best. Bite the bullet, move forward, set the line, and look to go forward in that manner in the future here, especially in our district area. So that's, that's where I'm at, you know, just in the conversations. And it's not easy...
No, I closed public comment, ma'am. I closed public comment.
Sir, I'd like to respond to some of the, my question did not get answered. I asked a question about why we needed 1,277 EDUs when growth is only projected to be 100 EDUs over a 10-year period, and we're going to be paying for those EDUs, whatever that facility that's going to be built. He says it's going to be built with a grant. That's fine, but it's, it's people to run it or whatever this...
Yeah, I know. No one has to answer this question. So she's not stopping, she's not stopping, and she's not supposed to talk. So nobody has to answer that question. Supervisor Sabatier?
It's a valid point.
It is. You should have said it during public comment. No, you...
I'm just saying it was never answered.
All right, ma'am. We're not going to have a back and forth.
I have it on tape.
All right. It's on tape here as well.
I do want to say that, so we approved the final report. I don't remember. It's been a little while, and I get all the weeks...
The 22nd. Yeah, we did it on the 22nd.
But we approved the final report that we're also, it's in our attachments. And I thought that I maybe didn't ask the right questions, but I thought this was going to be the day to potentially have a discussion about the rates. And I feel somewhat cornered that it's almost like we can't change the rates, or else I'm asking you to start all over. And at what, my question is, at what point is the right time to question, was that during the final report? Because I was told that was not the right time at that point to question, because it wasn't, it was about the reporting process... wasn't, it was about the reporting process and creating the final report, not the specifics of what was going to be proposed to the public. What is the right time? Because I'm feeling like I'm being pulled away some of the choices that I feel that we should have, that the public wants us to hear talking about, but at the same time saying that now we're just asking for you to restart. So what is the appropriate time to discuss the report's suggestion of the rate increases prior to it coming here and feeling like it's a static thing?
When the report was reviewed, it would have been the proper time to discuss having a different rate structure presented. However, at this point in time, we can still discuss rates and I'm open to the board's consideration of adoption at a lower rate. But as Anita pointed out and as I've said, we can't go above what the report identifies. You know, the report has to set rates based on anticipated operating costs and there is a portion of that rate that goes to fund and rebuild reserves. So if the board was considering the public input and was considering the impact that the 100% upfront in the first year had and was not comfortable implementing it at this recommended structure, then they have the ability and the liberty to recommend rates at a lower percentage. And if that's the board's wish, then I'm 100% on board with that. We will operate out of reserves a little bit longer and it will take us longer than the five years possibly to rebuild our reserves, but we will still continue moving forward and the impact to the downstream customers will be lessened as we transition into this.
And a follow-up, two follow-up questions. One, right now we're looking at 116.5 total. Is that what we can't go above or we can't go above the 6% and the 3.5%?
I would say it's probably safe to back away from percentages. What we can't go above are the recommended monthly or bimonthly rates. Fixed dollars are a lot easier to deal with than percentages. Percentages get skewed when you start manipulating and maneuvering them around. So the rate has looked at fixed dollars of operating expenses and cost of services and has recommended fixed dollars to recover those expenses. So if we stay below the rate in a dollar value at any given point in the five-year rate analysis, we are okay. We cannot propose going above the dollar value, any of those numbers that have been identified.
Okay. And then my last question is, just slipped my mind.
Supervisor Simon, you're following this last question? You don't have anything else?
No, I have it this far.
Yes, your reserves. How long has it been since you've not had any reserves there? Is it just this year?
We're not empty, but we're low. We've been operating out of them for a few years now. About five years. And this came up during the budget. I think we used 160 or 130,000 out of reserves in the last fiscal year.
And I will make one final statement, looking at the average household income in comparison to the district that I serve in the city of Clear Lake and seeing that I pay 87 and might even be $88 now every two months in comparison to what's being proposed for Middletown, which has a much higher household income, obviously it can be afforded. It's the matter of readjustment and so that's why I'm continuing the conversation of looking at the reduction. But at this moment, I am going to let Supervisor Simon take the lead on this one.
I appreciate that statement Supervisor Sabatier because I noticed the current rates and then I see the proposed rates and I know in my district it is the same amount as the proposed rates. And so there's a myriad of people with the same type of predicament of fixed incomes and whatnot that are currently paying that there. I don't, I don't object to incremental, you know, incremental if that's the direction, but otherwise I do know that the same statement that Supervisor Sabatier made is prevalent in my district as well. So just wanted to state that. All right. Supervisor Green, did you have another statement or?
Just ready to make a motion.
It's his district. Most of the time we allow the district supervisor to make the motion of the object on the agenda for them.
Is there anything needs to be done before Anita or?
Protest tabulation.
I can speak to that. So there were 85 verified protests to the hearing today.
And that's Johanna DeLong, yeah.
Can I ask for a clarification? 85 out of how many parcels?
522 were sent out.
Thank you.
To active property owners, sewer customers.
All right. Completed? Okay. Mr. Chair, sitting as the Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, or do I just offer the yeet?
No, sir. You're right to sit as the Lake County San Board of Directors. For the adoption of the ordinance, I'd recommend two readings. First, a motion with first a motion to waive reading and have it read in title only.
So moved.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, I have it here. I can do it. An ordinance amending section 721(c) of the Sewer Use Ordinance, Appendix A of the Lake County Ordinance Code, increasing sewer use fees for all properties that discharge to the Middletown Wastewater Treatment Plant, excluding Anderson Springs. And then there'd be a motion to advance for a second reading and that could be for the 13th if your board selects that date.
We need a time certain for that?
No, sir.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And for a point of clarification, these rates will go into effect in February of 2023.
All right. Okay. That covers everything? Okay. All right. Thank you for the presentation and appreciate this. We're going to go ahead and break shortly and we'll come back at 10:25 because I have to take one. You can say me. All right. Welcome back from the break. We'll go ahead and move on the agenda to item 6.3. Right? All right. Hearing on account and proposed assessment for 10849 East Highway 20, Clear Lake Oaks. And I think we have William Fox online. All right. Sir, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Do I need to be sworn in or anything before?
Yes. And is there anyone online that if you're here on behalf of this, please raise your right hand or if there's anyone in the chamber so that way you can be sworn in as well?
With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. All right. I'll share my screen here. I have a little presentation. Is that presenting correctly or do I need to switch the screens?
I think, I think we're fine.
All right. Good morning, everybody. My name is William Fox. I'm a Water Resources Program Coordinator with the County of Lake and I'm responsible for lakebed management within the department. And upon completion of an abatement, which happened on the subject property, a 10849 East State Highway 20, Clear Lake Oaks, California, 95423, we are required to give an account and proposed assessment for the work that has been conducted and if approved by the board will be reported as a lien against the property. So I'm going to start off with a property description here. The owner on record is a Karen and Jack layer. The property address, as I stated before, is a 10849 East State Highway 20, Clear Lake Oaks, California, 95423, APN 035-502-19, sown as R1 Single Family Residential and the property description is an approved parcel with a single-family dwelling and lakebed structure. So on January 21st, 2021, the property was found to be in violation of the Lake County Code, Chapter 23 Shoreline Ordinance and the associated lakebed encroachment lease. The lakebed improvement was in a dilapidated state consisting of broken planks, missing pilings, scattered debris, pieces of the structure were actively falling into the lake. These issues violate both the Lake County Code, Chapter 23 Shoreline Ordinance, Section 13.2 Maintenance, Repair and Removal of Improvements. These issues also violate the lakebed encroachment lease, Section 13 Maintenance and Repair, signed by the owner for encroachment upon the public trust plans, public trust lands of Clear Lake. A violation letter was sent to the property owner via certified mail on May 18th, 2021 to notify the owner of the existing issues and giving them time to remedy those issues. On September 28th, 2021, no progress had been made to come into compliance or notify our Department of Intentions to come into compliance and as such, a notice of nuisance and order to abate was posted on the property and sent to the owner via certified mail. So here you can see some pictures of the initial investigation conducted on January 21st, 2021. You can see on the left there, there's a lot of scattered debris and waste coming off of the structure. You cannot safely access the structure in any way. Like I said, missing planks, pilings, the structure is just partially there. So these issues kind of create a safety navigation and potential water quality issue. And I'd also like to state that it's a privilege and responsibility to own lakefront property. Like I said, there's a lakebed lease associated with the property so they have certain responsibilities that they need to hold up. Lakefront property abuts quite possibly our largest asset to the county, Clear Lake, which provides drinking water to over 60% of our residents. Endless recreational opportunities to visitors and residents harbors our listed species of fish. The Clear Lake Hitch has numerous populations of resident migrating birds and is extremely culturally significant to our indigenous communities. We did try to contact the owner on record, a Karen and Jack layer, multiple times for and received no reply or further contact over the 1.5-year period from the initial violation letter sent in May 2021 until abatement was conducted in September of 2022. I would like to note that the lakebed encroachment lease signed by the property owner and by all property owners with improvements within the public trust lands of Clear Lake gives the right to the leaseor, which is the County of Lake, to go on the lease premises and all improvements for any purposes associated with the rules, regulations and policies of lakebed management. A determination was made to move forward with abatement due to the issues persisting on the property and the owner not being willing or able to contact our department in regards to the issues persisting on the property. We requested an inspection and abatement warrant that was issued by the Lake County Superior Court Judge to allow our Class A marine contractors to be on site and abate the issues persisting. The abatement was conducted on September 23rd, 2022. Here you can see our contractor, Lake Marine Construction, who responded to RFQ 21-13, working to abate these issues and remove the remaining structure which was falling into the lake and cutting the remaining pilings which were serving as a navigation hazard. Here you can see a before and after picture of the abatement. You can see the seawall in the left-hand corner of both, kind of noting the same angle the picture was taken and abatement was completed on October 5th, 2022. So I would like to end the presentation with our recommendation. On October 5th, 2022, compliance with the notice of nuisance and order to abate was attained. The abatement costs were $18,000 and 0 cents. The administrative costs were $2,523.77. Staff is recommending, the Board of Supervisors confirmed the assessment of $20,520, or $20,577 and direct staff to report a notice of lien against the property. After regurgitation, it should be delivered to the county auditor who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment roll as a special assessment. Again, the total amount that staff is recommending the board approve is $20,523.77. And that'll end my presentation.
Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
Love seeing the cleanup like that. Thank you so much, Mr. Fox. I do have one question. It's more of a rhetorical question, but it's one that I ask code enforcement as well. I see that we're not doing any fines. Will we be able to do fines once code enforcement has the fine process settled? Because I believe you're kind of copying and pasting from what code enforcement does.
Yeah, correct. That is the intention. We're going to follow suit with them once they get their collection service onboarded.
Okay. Because my intention is not to collect more. My intention is we need to get property owners to do this on their own rather than staff taking it from A to Z. And I think the fines give good motivation to do it on your own so that it lowers the total cost that people will accrue. So, but appreciate the work that you've done. Looks good and looking forward to approve this.
Yeah. And then just going off of that, many landowners are notified. So we have probably maybe an 80% compliance rate. So once people are notified, the majority of people do try to, they do then submit permits to repair their existing structure. So these situations are almost entirely when we cannot contact the owner on record.
Yeah. No, I think the fines are not made for the compliant personalities. They're meant for those that either ignore the letters or maybe we're not finding them.
Correct.
But thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Is there anyone online here for this item? All right. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I do have one last question. You said that they cut the pylons. How close to the lakebed did they cut the pylons? Just kind of thinking about debris for boats and stuff like that.
They cut them right at the mudline. So the purpose of that is so they don't create any lakebed disturbance. We're trying to limit lakebed disturbance so they're cut right at the mudline so they're not pulled and then kind of disturb that area. So they're cut as close to the actual lakebed bottom as they physically can.
Okay. And then that means they don't stick up? Perfect.
Yep. Correct.
All right. There's nothing further. Honorable Chair, I move the Board of Supervisors confirm the assessment of $20,523.77 and direct staff to record a notice of special assessment lien against the property with cost of abatement services at $18,000 and administrative costs amounting to $2,523.77.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, William. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is item 6.4, Presentation of the 2021 Lake County Annual Crop Report. And we have Kathryn VanderWaal, our Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures, Director.
Kathryn VanderWaal, Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Weights and Measures. I would like to thank you for your time this morning as I present to you the 2021 Crop Report for Lake County. So what is the crop report? In essence, every year, each county in the state prepares a report that details the gross value and production of agricultural commodities grown within the county as required by the California Food and Agriculture Code. California is unique in that we are the only state where each county produces their own crop report. This information is used by businesses, financial institutions and other agencies. The information in these reports can also be used as benchmark data when determining loss from a disaster. I'd like to thank all the agricultural producers, businesses and other entities who contributed information for this report. I would also like to thank my staff, Sam Upton, Avella Cartero, Janice Luke and Kevin Goncalves, who worked closely with our producers to obtain the information and compile the data. So in 2021, Lake County's agricultural commodities had a gross value of $83,452,366. This is an 11% increase from the gross value of 2020. I want to mention that this report represents gross values only and does not take into account the costs of production, marketing, transportation or net income or loss to the In this slide, we have a 15-year gross value comparison. So to the far left is 2007 and then we proceed to right to 2021. So 2017 was our peak year there. So 2017 was our peak year there. And this can be contributed to both the wine grape and the pear industry. So as is common in many areas, including agriculture, there are ebbs and flows. Market prices, demand, environmental conditions and crop varieties fluctuate, all of which have an impact on our gross value. Our gross production values, 2021 is represented in blue and 2020 is represented in orange. And you may not be able to read the numbers in there. So I apologize for that. But you could see the comparison and how things have shifted from 2020 to 2021. So in 2021, the value of timber was $29,670, which represents a 6% decrease from 2020. Field and seed crops, such as pasture, rangeland, hay crops and others, saw an increase of 46% in 2021 with a gross value of $1,798,522. Livestock and poultry products, such as eggs, honey and other products, saw a 79% increase in 2021 with a value of $161,555. Livestock production was down 20% when compared to 2020. The gross value for livestock production in 2021 was $2,45,612. Vegetable crops saw an increase of 41% in 2021 with a gross value of $240,045. Nursery production was up 6% with a gross value of $1,135,927. And our total all fruit and nut category, which includes wine grapes, pears, walnuts and other miscellaneous fruit and nut trees, that saw an increase of 11% with a gross value of $78,41, sorry, Our top five commodities coming in at number five is rangeland. And that's an estimated $900,000. Our number four commodity is nursery production, just over $1 million. Our number three commodity, which is cattle and calves, at about $1.2 million. Our number two commodity is pears with a value of $17,700, what was it say? 17.7 million?
There you go.
So that's an increase of 7% from 2020. And I also want to make notes. If anybody did look at the crop report as far as the acreage reported for 2020 versus 2021, you'll see that 2021 shows an increase of 17 acres for pears. Many are aware that there are no new plantings of pears. So I believe what happened is when we were doing our acreage survey in 2020, some of the acreage may have been missed, which was then picked up in 2021. Just to explain that discrepancy. Okay, and then our number one commodity is wine grapes at $59 million. That is a 13% increase from 2020. That is the end of my presentation. Does the board have any questions?
Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you so much for this report. I really appreciate seeing this annually. It's really, oh, you got a leak. It's really easy to find the reports on your website still, even with the new website. I think it's very useful to look at the trends and look at where we've come from and where we are today. Because year to year, things happen. But long-term trends, it's easier to see when you look at each of the reports. I was surprised at how much more acres were planted for our wine grapes. I expected a smaller amount. I thought it was more around the 300 acre, but it seemed to be closer to the 500 or more acre range. But I do want to mention something. And it's a conversation that I've had with our ag commissioner. And I wanted to mention, I thought it was a good time to mention this here with the board. In 2016, for vegetables and other miscellaneous crops, we know that our pears have gone down. So 2016, we were like at 1,500 acres. We're close to 1,300 acres right now with the addition of 17 new acres, as you stated. But we know the pears are going down. We know the walnuts, it's basically, we've been priced out. Some people are keeping their walnuts. But as far as what's harvested and what's produced has definitely declined. But when we look at our vegetable crops, which is still talking specifically about food, in 2015, it was 21 acres. It kind of went down, it kind of went up. Eventually, we seem to have hit a high of 32 acres in 2019. And in 2021, we dropped to 7.52 acres. I am concerned in the food production that we have here in Lake County. And I know that I've had conversations with the Farm Bureau, with the Ag Commissioner and others. How can we increase that to create sustainability for food production? There is, we just went through the Ag Venture together with Chair Crandall. We had a conversation about food scarcity. I'm in other state conversations where food scarcity is becoming a very common topic because of the extreme weathers that we face and because of the unpredictability of the weather that we face with climate change that's occurring. And so these are becoming more and more important, at least to me, and I'm bringing it to the board, that we should look at a way to try to get our food production to be increased. I know I am working on those things. It's kind of unknown what that is. But I just want to highlight that that's a concern to me. As an agricultural county, agriculture means a lot of different things, from wine grapes to cattle grazing to cannabis. But I think food production, just like water, is truly one of the most important things to me when I look at that report and seeing it getting smaller and smaller is concerning. And I hope that we can increase it, create greater markets that demand us to have food. That's one of the things that I'm working on. But I wanted to highlight that because that is definitely something that I take from this report. We're doing well. It's great to see the increases that we have. But I'm very much focused on the food production that's occurring here. And I hope that we can see that increase in the years to come. But thank you for the report.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate, I love this report. It's glossy, it makes me happy. Did have a couple softball questions and probably not part of this report. But I didn't see any plans for agent releases or control measures for Yellow Star Thistle in 2023. Maybe that's a separate item for a different day to discuss about what the ag department's various control activities are. But Yellow Star Thistle was a thing. So that kind of popped out to me. I did see the impact on the walnuts from the freeze event. Was a little curious about whether that's just like, it's the way it is and that's going to be permanent damage or if there's an opportunity or if you see any signs of rebound from that freeze event. And last question, and I don't need answers to any of these. It's just observations. Yeah, I'm kind of curious about our domestic food supply. And it's not entirely all on our larger agricultural community to do that, that they're going to grow crops for the markets they can find. But through some combination of community gardens or just micro grants to get some of our growers back into that domestic food supply. That's, you know, I support that. One thing I didn't see in here that I'd be curious to see in future years is available ag land and land that is actually being used for production. Again, I come from Fresno where ag land is routinely swapped out for different crops left and right. But the one thing you don't see a lot down there is fallow land. But I do see quite a bit of fallow land in our ag basins. And it's concerning to me. So I don't know if it's an economic suppression that's going on there and the lack of ability to bring these lands back into production. But having, just as we're studying in a future item what our groundwater capacity is, understanding what our surface land capacity is for agricultural production, knowing what our baseline is and using that kind of baseline to figure out if we're underperforming, if there are things we can do to stimulate not just small-scale agriculture, but big-scale agriculture. So it is concerning to me that we do have a fair amount of lands that don't appear to be in any type of production. And I don't know how you would quantify that or if it should be quantified in a crop report. But it's kind of the backside of the crop report is what crops aren't we growing? On what lands are we not using in not growing those crops? If that makes sense? So those are just kind of broad questions. You can take a couple stabs if you want or just say, I'll get back to you on those items.
Definitely. I think the, you know, the last item you addressed, I'd have to get back to you. So the crop report is, it's a mandated report by the Food and Ag Code. So there are certain criteria elements that have to be in this report. So adding something in as far as our acreage of agricultural land and availability of what's fallow would be in addition to the report. And that's something, of course, that I'd have to work with other county departments to get that information. And, you know, keep in mind too that even if a parcel of zone is ag, it may not necessarily be suitable for, you know, crop growing or something. It could be like on the side of a hill or, it's all, just depends. But as far as the first two questions, the biological control agent release. So that is a historical program that we still have those agents, you know, throughout the county. That program was through the California Department of Food and Ag. And counties worked cooperatively with the State Department of Food and Ag, you know, for those, for the agents and to release them into areas. And several years ago, the state, you know, there was a lot of cutbacks in the state and different programs. And that was one of the programs that was cut. So as of now, that's not happening. We're just working with what's established in the county. You know, this is something we can definitely keep an eye on and look into to see if there are any programs that, you know, we could monitor to see what agents that we still have here or if there's any more release programs that we might be able to obtain with that one. And as far as the walnut growers, there was that late freeze in 2020 that hit the walnut growers hard. Just driving around the county, you can see damage in the orchards. So some of the walnut growers, they, you know, they were very proactive. They're trying to rehabilitate their orchards, cut out the old dead wood. But it's just going to take years. You know, there's a time factor to see the health of those orchards come back. So, thank you. You're welcome.
Supervisor Simon.
Well, Supervisor Sabatier, I think you're completely right. You know, what type of foods are we producing here? So I hope that, you know, that continues. And we as a board, you know, really talk about that over the next decade. Supply chain, which we experienced during the pandemic, other reasons, but food sovereignty is very important, especially with our location as we're moving forward for the next generations. I think looking at those opportunities is going to be real important. And with bringing the Blue Zones Program here to Lake County to look at how do we provide that healthier food, more organic, you know, the farm-to-table atmosphere, you know, not only supports our, you know, community being healthier, but also providing that other part of the economy. And we say we're an agricultural community. We really need to get to that food production level along with the grapes and everything else that's coming along. So I definitely agree with you in that conversation. These are things we all need to be having as landowners or business owners as we move forward, how we do that. So I completely agree. The other question, just to comment, I guess. I know we have another product that may not be a part of this report. But I know in the past, our previous ag commissioner, you know, said this was some of the cannabis crop that was done. It wasn't a specific, but I know we did get a report here at the board just on, you know, potentially how many acres might be in cannabis and what was brought off of that. And just looking at that, it's going to be every year. It is, I know it's specifically not for this, but just in general understanding for ourselves as the board to understand. And I think it was just a comment. It wasn't provided in the report, I don't think, by Steve. But I know he did make some comments here in front of us and of the board of the other industry we have establishing now in Lake County.
Right.
Which is not an agricultural crop at this point. I don't know the exact definition. But for our information, it is being farmed here in Lake County.
Correct. And so we don't have that information for 2021. 2022, I am planning on having that information available to you. And because the crop, the crop report is part of the state crop reporting system, which is then part of the USDA crop statistics. And because, you know, the federal government still does not recognize cannabis as an agricultural commodity, it cannot be included in the crop report for that reason. However, counties have been given direction that they can include like an addendum or like an insert. It would be its own standalone information sheet. And we are planning to do that for 2022.
Excellent, thank you.
And just one thing, and I think this is kind of a takeaway from both the report and the Ag Venture. We do have award-winning agriculture happening right here in Lake County. And that is both our grape, our wine grapes that we grow. It was actually really pleasant during our redistricting process to listen to the state talk about Lake County as being a part of Napa because we are a part of wine country. And I thought that was something we need to bank on and really take advantage of. And I think our Wine Association and so on and so forth have really taken advantage of that as well. And as well as our cannabis, who have won awards as well. So I think that we have a landscape that provides exactly the type of resources needed to create the products we need. And just wanted to highlight that, that we have an amazing place.
Yeah, also the pears, world renowned. So obviously, if you live in Lake County and you've not had a pear, I'll tell you what, you're sure missing out. But what the pear industry does for Lake County, international, you know, and obviously the wine industry too. But the longstanding, you know, pear industry is just phenomenal. And I really enjoyed that process, going through the Ag Venture, understanding the entire process, how it all works. And then just seeing not only the production of the fruit, you know, but the job opportunities to accrete for the workforce during picking season and, you know, all the educational opportunities and even the working, the young workers that get to work there from, you know, Kelseyville area and around the county to see that hard work experience. So it's phenomenal. So obviously, all of them. But I tell you, you know, the pears, I just, I will tell you.
I feel like I just got slapped in the hand for not mentioning the pears. But thank you, saved me.
Because you were mentioning how the addition to the 17 acres and whatnot. And then probably next year, I mean, if you drove through Highway 20 where it meets 29 over in Upper Lake. And I think we discussed it in the Ag Venture course that some of those areas are not going to be, you know, growing pears any longer. So we'll be having a different amount there. And then I noticed even in the Ag Venture course that one of the farmers were discussing how difficult the market was when it comes to walnuts. And so, yeah, so I don't know. I agree with you on working on the different initiatives to try and assist some of the farmers with that, with that work. So, yeah. All right, any other questions or comments? I'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone from the public, please come up to the microphone or raise your hand in the Zoom and state your name for the record. And I'll start your three minutes.
I'm Joan Moss. The sheriff at the Veterans Day ceremony called me a journalist. I don't know if he's calling me a name or complimenting me, but I try to keep tabs. I was a farmer's market manager for more than two or three years. I really love the crops. I attended the planning commission, last meeting, the whole meeting. And I wanted to verify what you said And I wanted to verify what you said is that the federal government does not recognize cannabis as a crop, an agricultural crop. And I also wanted to ask a very controversial question. The grape crop is our highest producer. But I want you to ask yourself, is, does grape make a food? I believe grapes are also an industry rather than a crop. That's just my opinion. Thank you. But I congratulate you. And we have to keep Lake County producing crops that make food. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. All right. Supervisor Green?
Just since it was raised, this particular point as to the status of cannabis has been problematic for at least the last six years. Under California state law, cannabis is an agricultural product, and in my belief is entitled to all the respect and the rights thereof. As the federal law changes, as it will in future years, and we start clarifying what can and can't be included in certain activities and reports based on perceptions about whether it's a product or a commodity. You know, we're going to plow through those procedural issues, but let's just all be clear, the cannabis is a plant. It's grown in soil under sunshine. It uses water, and it is an agricultural activity. It is an agricultural product. And someday soon enough, it will be an agricultural commodity. And I hope we can just here in Lake County acknowledge that cannabis is super important to our economy currently, and we should be giving it all the respect it is due. Thank you.
So I'll look online. I don't see any hands up. So I'll close public input at this time and bring it back to the board. And I think there is action that listed.
Move, we approve the 20.
Oh, wait, one, one second, one second. Ms. Grant?
This is, this report's already been issued, I believe, and it's on the agenda as a presentation. So there really is no action. I do see there's a notation in the staff memo for approval, but
That's why.
Listed as a no action.
Okay, my fault. I, I seen that note and I thought there was. So, yeah, there's no action needed. All right. Well, thank you very much, Catherine, for your report.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Let's see. So let's take item seven points. You said five? Okay. So we'll take over 7.5, a consideration of the resolution of the Board of Supervisors of County of Lake adopting an amending or amended conflict of interest code for the County of Lake agencies and B, consideration of resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake approving conflict of interest codes of certain local agencies located wholly within the county. And with that.
Ms. Harrington is on the, on the panel for you.
Ms. Harrington, you have the floor.
Morning board. I, well, want to thank you for your attention to this item, but I do want to point out that this is a matter of routine business. You see it every other year on our even years. Last was December of 2020. It just inadvertently ended up as a timed item, but normally it's on the consent agenda. So I'm here in case there's any questions. You've all been exposed to the Form 700, so every other year we reach out to all the departments. We gather any edits or changes and positions that may require the Form 700 to be completed, and then we pass it to, because for local, for counties, the Board of Supervisors is the code approving body. And so that's why it's in front of you for approval. That's about all I have unless you have some additional questions, or if you want me to go into more detail. I'm not sure. Because like I said, it is a matter of ordinary business and you've seen it year after year.
I'm going to ask that we take a one-minute recess to wait for Chair Crandall.
Grabbing a cup, yeah.
Is that okay with you guys?
Yes.
I just don't know who's supposed to take the lead since there's no vice chair either.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see.
There he is.
There we go. All right.
It's up to you. She's done her presentation.
Okay. It's up to me for?
Continuing.
All right. Yes, please continue.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
So I do have a question. I'm looking at the list. For some reason, this popped out at me. I see that we have elected officials on Exhibit A for the final draft, as well as some of the staff members. And there was one person that I couldn't find, that I couldn't figure out, are they exempt? Are they somewhere else? I couldn't find county council. So I'm looking at on Exhibit A, County of Lake Final Draft, on page 11, there's the County Department Agency County Council. I see the deputy county councils. I see the senior deputy county council, but I didn't see county council herself. And just curious, is that supposed to be on the list or is that separate?
That's separate and goes through the FPPC through the registrar of voters.
Okay.
All right.
That answers my question.
Supervisor Green?
Real quick question on the exhibit. So I do know there have been some changes at Lakeport Fire as far as their board membership. I don't know about their staff. We adopt this today. I assume there's probably going to be any number of possible staff changes. So I know they're as accurate as they can be when presented, but in adopting them today, we, there's no disadvantage if we have people on a list who don't belong there or, or what have you. Just what are we locking in as far as the exhibits, I guess is my question.
This is the information we have as of today. We are very dependent on responses from the department and, you know, for those to, to respond and fill out the information. And so as of today, that is the most accurate list of positions that require the Form 700 to be filled out.
Is it fair to say then that the, the conflict of interest provisions apply more to the position than the person filling that position? So if, for example, something needs to be amended, it will just be a routine matter of advising an incoming director or staff member that they too will be subject to this, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, open it up to public input. Is there anybody online that has any comments on this item on the agenda? All right. Not seeing any, we'll bring it back to the board for further action. And they're both resolutions.
Mr. Chair, I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been.
Oh, wait, let me be specific. The resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake adopting an amended conflict of interest code for the County of Lake agencies.
Yeah, we do one at a time. Resolution has been offered. Go ahead.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Resolution passes.
And Mr. Chair, I offer the resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake approving conflict of interest codes of certain local agencies located wholly within the county.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you. And thank you very much, Genevieve, for your, for your update on this and your presentation. Sorry. All right. Next, we will cover 7.2, review and consideration of adding Juneteenth as county, as a county-paid holiday. And I'll give the floor to Susan, our CAO. And then she will give it to.
Yes. Thank you, Chair. Today, we have ACAo Stephen Carter and HR Director Pam Samick present this item. As you may recall, during our budget process, staff was requested to bring this back to the board for consideration.
All right.
So on June 14th, the board directed us to explore the possibility of adding Juneteenth as a county-paid holiday. This commemorates the end of slavery in the United States. Both federal and state celebrate this as a paid holiday. I will let Stephen review the cost.
So Stephen Carter, Assistant CAO. The, the main cost of this is actually the loss of the productivity of staff. But if, so that's, that's quite a loss in production. The other cost would be about $245,000. That's what it costs about as a report, position control report census from 9/27, a point in time. That's about what one day of wages is for all of our staff. And that would just be the payroll. If you add the approximately 40%, because everybody's slightly different depending on what insurance you're on, you would add about $98,000 for benefits. Total cost would be about $343,000 for one day, which also includes just over $33,000 for overtime for like the sheriff's officers at the jail. Or if there's other organizations like social services that has to have people on staff so many days of the year. That's the main cost of it and open for questions.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I appreciate you bringing this back to us. I really appreciate giving us the full amount of what the cost is. I think this being a state and a federal holiday, that we need to match up with that, especially as we continue to deal with our courts, who are sometimes on a different schedule than us. It's nice to have that same schedule. However, I, I don't know what the board will say, but I would love to see us go into closed sessions with the unions in discussing this addition. I don't want to say too much because I don't want to negotiate in public. But I think this is a good thing to look into, but I think that getting the the feedback from the unions and, and type of what negotiations are needed in order to ensure that this is, I'll just be blunt, I hate adding more unproductive days that taxpayers are paying for. And I think that that closed-door session can look at what possibilities might exist in order to add this in.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a quick question. Do the federal and state holidays occur on the 19th always, or do they stagger around a weekend to kind of soften the blow sometimes?
I don't know. On this particular one, I think that's the day it's celebrated. So that, that's.
That would be logical. I was just wondering, but 4th of July, for example, we only celebrate it on the 4th.
It roams. It's, you know, and then same with Thanksgiving. Sometimes it's the last week of, of November. Sometimes it's the second to the last. It varies.
So this would stay on the 19th, sorry. This would stay on the 19th, and then if it falls on a Saturday, you'd get the Friday off, Sunday, you'd get the Monday off.
And then to Supervisor Sabatier's question and the recommended action, if we direct staff to execute the necessary steps, I assume meet and confer with the unions would be part of that process, correct?
Yes, if we're just adding a holiday, it's really just a courtesy notice. But if you're looking to exchange a holiday in place for this, then that would be a meet and confer on that. So it depends on the direction.
Is that what's happening? And which holiday we would be exchanging if that's the case?
We're looking, well, for me to move forward, I'm looking for your direction. Are we taking it and just adding it as a holiday? Or are you looking to do something else?
All right. Supervisor Simon?
From my point of view, I appreciate, you know, I think I made a comment about this before bringing it back. Obviously, understanding the cost as we move forward. I think this is a significant date. From, from my point of view, it'd be adding the holiday. That's, that's where I am. I understand the questions that may be asked. The board moved forward as the vote is taken, you know, with the majority here, but I think it would be a significant opportunity for us to move forward when we talk about inclusion and you know, my vote would be to add the holiday. So, so making it very clear.
I think, I think this is, I'm glad we're, I'm glad we're discussing this, and I'm glad we are going to do something to add this holiday or whatever the case may be. I too feel like we should add it. I respect Supervisor Sabatier's comment to me, to speak with the unions. I don't see, and I don't want to speak for them, but for me, I just don't see why they would be against it. But if there is a situation, if you're meeting and conferring with them, I think that's, you know, that helps. But for me, it's either a day that they'll have off and be paid for holiday pay, or if somebody has to work, they'll be paid double time or time and a half, or whatever the case may be, in order to work that day. So, I mean, for me, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. But if the board chooses to have what you're asking for, I mean, I'm fine with moving forward with adding the day and going in that direction. So.
And again, I'll, I'll try to clarify without making it sound like negotiations. I think the day has to be added. I don't think that part, to me, it's not a choice. But right now, there is, I think, 12 days that are official holidays that are off. I remember the list listed 12 things on the days off. And then there's a whole week for Christmas, and there are some days that aren't holidays that are days off. And so I, I just want to have a conversation because we are adding another day of not working. We have days that aren't holidays. I'd like to have a, a conversation to figure out. Like today, we are, if we say yes without negotiations, we are giving away another day of unproduction on top of the three weeks of vacation you get when you first start on year one, on top of the holidays that you already get just for working here. I'd like to get a better grasp of what the total amount looks like rather than just adding. Again, I don't think there's a choice in my perspective. We want to add this. This is a state and federal holiday. It's an important holiday. Absolutely, it belongs there. But just adding rather than asking for a negotiation, that, that's where I stand.
Well, we, maybe Anita can speak to that. So we have signed MOUs with the holidays that are in place, which include the winter break. Those are already in place till the end of our contract. So I'm not sure you would, the unions are going to want to negotiate to make changes because those are already in place and kind of signed, sealed, and delivered.
It'll come down to the vote. Sounds like you're waiting to hear that.
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Anita not to spank me, but the productivity thing was raised. So if, if, if we move ahead with Juneteenth, which I think we should, and I think I hear consensus on that. I'm sensitive to productivity. Another holiday where we may have some productivity possibilities would be we don't share the same holiday with our current Indigenous Peoples' Days and then the state celebration of Native American Day. And I don't know the history of that and if we're sticking to our guns on that. But I do know from a productivity standpoint, when the court is closed on one day and our offices that deal with the court, for example, are not able to do that, and conversely, the courts can't rely on our staff to be there when we're closed for that holiday. That definitely is a productive, productivity issue that I've seen firsthand. And again, that is not on this agenda item. But if I were to say, you know, if we were to give direction to staff to, as we look for ways to pay for Juneteenth, to also look for efficiencies and things we might bring back on a future date, that might be something we could look at. Again, it wouldn't lower our costs necessarily, but it may improve our efficiency, at least as we work with, with the courts on that. So just raising that. Haven't got spanked yet. Don't know if there's any interest in giving, giving that direction on top of this. But I do support the proposal to get Juneteenth on there. I just think there may be a little bit of productivity we can look at on that holiday. And I don't know if there's any other holidays that we don't match with the state exactly.
Ms. Grant?
I, I think the comment of Supervisor Green was fine. I think direction under this item would be a, a problem, given that it just relates to June 10th. But the, certainly when your board gives direction for negotiations, those kind of productivity issues are, are something that you can always consider. So.
And I thank you for that comment, Supervisor Green. I also, I know that I may be, I'll be looking at Anita just in case, but I know that when we conducted the Indigenous Peoples' Day and replaced it with Columbus Day, that, that was done. So I think for me, when you mentioned the California state holiday, for me, I would really love to see a, a holiday for Hispanics. We have, they're the second most population in our county. So for me, I, I think it's a beneficial initiative to ensure that we recognize each ethnicity and especially the second highest population in our county. I do appreciate Juneteenth as well because we do have a high amount, or we do have a community of African Americans. And so it's important to show that we actually respect these ethnicities. And I, I feel that, I understand the productivity aspect of it, but when it comes to morale, I think that, for me, that is something that can play into the productivity when it comes to the morale of some of our employees that are getting an extra day. Or the pay that comes along with the, the day that they have to work in order to do so. Because I know that that's one of the attributes that we have a hard time with when it comes to morale, retention and things of that nature. So I think it's a benefit. So that's just one of my other statements. And I know that Sheriff Martin had sent a text in the chat saying that per the county internet site, there are currently 15 holidays designated for 2023. Okay. And so I don't know if anyone wants to. And so I don't know if anyone wants to elaborate, or if we, I think we'll just open it to the public here. There's anybody, or Supervisor Sabatier?
If I can elaborate, just to read what's on the MOU, 4th of July, People's Indigenous Day that we replaced Columbus Day with the People's Indigenous Day, or Indigenous People's Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, day after Thanksgiving, winter holiday, which I believe is five days.
Correct.
Then January 1st, New Year's, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, President's Day in February, Memorial Day in May, and then it says any other holiday declared by the board pursuant to state law, which I don't think we've acted on. So at this moment, there's officially 10 specific days and then the five. So 15 is correct.
All right.
And this would be 16.
All right. I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that has a comment on this item on the agenda? Not seeing anyone on Zoom. So we'll bring it back to the board for further discussion or action.
There's nothing further, Honorable Chair. I move that we direct staff to execute the necessary steps to recognize Juneteenth as a paid county holiday.
Second. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
My opposition is not based on the holiday itself. It is based on finances and finding ways to equal out. As I made my statement, this is a very good holiday to celebrate and to add, but I do not agree with the process in which we are adding it. Nay.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could just to make sure, I'm sure staff already knows this, but state law does require now for formal approval by your board that this come back to you via resolution or ordinance.
All right. So it, once staff conducts their work on this, they'll bring it back to us for that, and the motion passes for that direction three to one. So we'll move forward from there, and then we'll come back as County Council has stated. All right. Thank you for this item, and we'll move on from there. And so it looks like, where are we at, 11:24? Yes, let's, let's take a break, and we'll come back and move on to our 11:30, which is our 6.5. All right. We'll, we'll come back at 11:30. That's because this isn't on, sorry. I was like, Sam, we're good. All right. So we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our 6.5. Presentation of the current status and next steps for the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan, BVGSP, and B, consideration and approval of resolution authorizing the Board of Directors of the Lake County Watershed Protection District acting as the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency, BVGSA, to file a grant application for the implementation of the BVGSP and authorize the Chair of the Board of Directors to sign. With that, we have Marina Delagiani here, and she will give the presentation.
Thank you so much, Chair Crandall. Good afternoon, Board. I am excited to be here, almost as excited I am about all the acronyms in my item for the Board and in the entire water world. So, yes, Marina Delagiani is here, Deputy Director of the Lake County Watershed Protection District. I also serve as the lead for our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee, also referred to as GSPAC, though not be a quiz at the end, I promise. But I'm here for a two-pronged approach item. I have an update on our Big Valley GSP, Groundwater Sustainability Plan, and then I'm also seeking support and approval from the Board for us to file a grant application under the California Department of Water Resources Sustainable Groundwater Management Grant Program, which will be due to the state if approved by the Board by December 16th. So we have a very quickly approaching timeline. And I apologize, this may be repetitive for some of you, but it's never a bad day to revisit our groundwater, right? So as folks may be aware, we have one priority groundwater basin as outlined by California Department of Water Resources, DWR Bulletin 118. So we have a variety of different groundwater basins located throughout the county, but the state has only prioritized one as a medium basin, and with this, through the California Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, we are tasked with doing a variety of things for this groundwater basin. The overall goal of SIGMA, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, is to ensure sustainability in different groundwater basins throughout the state, their priority basins, they being the state, until 2042 and looking forward. So just a little bit of background of our Big Valley Groundwater Basin. Our Big Valley Groundwater Basin lies south of Clear Lake and includes Kelsey Creek and Adobe Creek, which both drain into Clear Lake. It is a source of water for the community of Kelseyville and Big Valley Ranteria. It is the largest agricultural area in our entire community, and it is about six miles wide and eight miles long. So with this, again, SIGMA outlines the framework that we at the local level need to take to ensure sustainability. We did have a very quickly, we did have a very quick timeline to develop our Groundwater Sustainability Plan and Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Just as a refresher for those folks, our Groundwater Sustainability Agency is the local authority that oversees our groundwater basin, and our Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District serve as our Groundwater Sustainability Agency, and these are our friends up here, including Supervisor Pyska. We also developed a Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee, and these are a variety of stakeholders that have the expertise, knowledge of our groundwater basin. So I appreciate the efforts and knowledge that our Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee, our GSPAC, provided us during the process of developing our GSP. Now with our GSP development and the planning, we did have a public-facing process. We had over 36 meetings that are all archived on our Water Resources YouTube page and Water Resources website. So with these, these are all, all the material is on there. We also had additional public meetings, open houses, and this has continued on now towards the implementation. That is a key component of this update, is we are now transitioning from the planning of our Groundwater Sustainability Plan GSP now towards the implementation aspect. So again, SIGMA provides us that local framework of how do we develop a GSP, what are key components of a GSP, and then the process for adopting a GSP. So just to share, we have, the Groundwater Sustainability Agency for our Big Valley Basin did adopt unanimously, unanimously the GSP. And just to go over very quickly the steps that the state has outlined for adopting the GSP. One, we prepared a notice of intent to adopt. This was sent out to all the stakeholders, including the states, and other entities, saying, hey, we are in the process of planning for our GSP. If you have any comments, concerns, questions, or if you want to be involved in the process, here's how you can do so. We had the final public comment period on the draft GSP, which spanned from November 12th to December 3rd, 2021. It almost does not seem last year, but it is. We posted the final GSP once it was adopted by the Board on the week of January 3rd, 2022, and then the adoption of the GSP again went before the Board on January 11th, 2022. All of that recordings and meeting material is archived on Granicus, and then also our Water Resources website, along with the state portal now. We had that, we were able to meet that deadline by submitting the GSP. We did have a 75-day public comment period that was hosted by the state. We also had multiple public comment periods that were hosted by us at the Water Resources Department, and that began immediately after the GSP was submitted. We did receive a few public comments, additional public comments, and again, those, all those public comments, including the comments that we collected during our own additional public comment period, are archived on the state portal, which I have a link to in the next few slides. And then we are currently in the state review period of our GSP. That began after the 75-day public comment period. The state is not only reviewing our GSP, but all the other GSPs that were not critically overdraft basin GSPs throughout the state, so they have a two-year timeframe of getting back to us. Now, after that two-year timeframe, which I don't have on this list here, is if they have any comments or corrections that we need to make, that opens up another 180 days for us to make any revisions or make any, respond to any comments that the state may have before they officially approve or disapprove of our GSP. So we're in the waiting period right now as to whether or not they're going to approve our GSP, but it is still expected of us to move forward with the implementation of our GSP. They don't want us to wait two years. There are some low-hanging fruits that I'm going to outline here that we have made progress on and that we're going to continue to make progress on to ensure the sustainability of our groundwater basin. So if you don't want to read the plethora of pages that is involved in our GSP, if you need some nighttime reading, I highly encourage it. If you need a hard copy, we're more than happy to print such out at Water Resources, but again, the online link, if you want to save some trees, is on the DWR portal. So the first part of the GSP was describing the basin conditions, so what water sources are used in the basin and what are the basin conditions related to those uses, defining the basin's sustainability. So what does sustainability mean to us in our specific Big Valley Groundwater Basin? Here, the state wanted to see what are going to be the boots on the ground? What are some of our data gaps that we have? What are our missing pieces? What are we planning on doing to ensure sustainability? And this is what we outline as our PMA, or Project and Management Actions, and Implementation Plan. So this is really focused on what we're seeking funding for from the state. And then, of course, developing and adopting the GSP. Will this plan meet our sustainability goals? And this is where we leverage the resource and the expertise from our stakeholders, and then also bringing this before the Board and engaging with the community to make sure that our plan is as best as it can be. Moving forward, here is just the link of our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan. So if you follow this link here, the DWR portal, and if you're following and playing with this tool, not only is our GSP on here, but all the other GSPs that were submitted to the state, including the critically overdraft basins. Again, we only have one plan that was submitted for our county, which is our Big Valley. If you have questions or concerns using this tool, just give us a call at Water Resources, and we're more than happy to walk you through it. But here you see all the legal documentations, affidavit, our public comment, our notice of intent, everything that is related to our GSP, including all of the planned documents and appendices, is all on this one portal right here, and it'll take you directly to our GSP for our Big Valley Basin. All right. So moving on to why I'm here today also is requesting support and approval for our department to, and the Big Valley GSA, to submit a grant application under the California Department of Water Resources Sustainable Groundwater Management Grant. This is their implementation. Just as a reminder, a few years ago, I came to your Board to request approval to apply for the DWR SGM grant planning, which we were awarded a little under 1.4 million zero-dollar cost shares for the planning of our Groundwater Sustainability Plan. So this was a huge appreciative effort and support that was provided from the state. I just want to reiterate the support that the state has been able to provide us during this entire time. Again, they outline the rules and regulations we need to follow, but they leave it to us at the local level for the expertise to actually do the boots on the ground, the planning and the implementation. With that, they do have resources that we could leverage and that we can utilize, this being one of them. So the SGM Implementation Round Two Solicitation opened on October 4th, 2022. This was for eligible applicants, which our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan and our basin is an eligible applicant because we are a medium priority basin. The Round One Solicitation was for critically overdraft basins, so I just want to make that clear, and this solicitation will close on December 16th. So as you can see, we had, we have a very short window to, to apply for this grant funding. So this Round Two will provide over 200 million from the General Fund and Proposition 68 from the state. I just want to mention how competitive this grant application is, and from my conversations with the state and other GSAs around the, around the state, this seems to be one of our last funding opportunities to actually do the implementation. Our objective is to make the implementation of our GSP as fiscally appropriate and feasible for the users in this basin, since, of course, the state really pressures on local control, but this also includes local funding if you get down to it. So that is why one of the importance of us to apply for this grant opportunity is such a high priority for our department. So here, I apologize, this is very, very small. It's very difficult for me to even read it, so I'm not going to go down to the specifics of it. I want to reiterate that this is the draft of what we're planning on applying for. So similar to how we develop a GSP, how we develop a Groundwater Sustainability Agency, and how we comply with SIGMA, the state also has very stringent guidelines, like any grant opportunity they provide, on what we can apply for and what we are eligible for applying for. So we are utilizing the expertise of our consultants who have applied for multiple grants. We went through the purchasing code for their assistance on this, and they are helping us develop our, our grant application that we will be submitting, fingers crossed, to the state. And with this, we're highlighting three different key components. Component one is probably one of the most important in terms of fiscally feasible for our users in the basin. This covers GSA operation and SIGMA compliance, so this is basically what we have to do. So similar to our GSP, we have to do annual reporting, we have to do updates to the state. If we do receive comments from the state on our GSP, this will help cover any costs associated with responding to those comments. This covers staff time, which, of course, we know Water Resources does a plethora of things, so this helps our department cover that time, and especially if we need to bring in additional expertise on that. This also helps us, helps us with long-term GSA fee studies, so of course, we'll have to do some sort of feasibility studies down the road to ensure that we can provide suitable funding for the long term of this project that is required from the state. Component two is a really fun one. This will help us address any data gaps and enhance decisions. So we have an idea of what the state will possibly provide comments on, based off of discussions with some of our stakeholders. We've hit some of their high-level priorities and projects, and we've outlined all of this in the GSP. So this should not be new knowledge to anyone. If you're familiar with the GSP, we hinted at some of these, and again, this will set us up to be as competitive as possible with this funding revenue, funding opportunity that we are planning on moving forward to. And then Component Three, this is the boots on the ground. The state has a huge emphasis, moving forward onto our fourth consecutive dry year, on recharge projects. So how can we appropriately capture the water that is falling into us and recharge it for our environment? So we have a few high-priority projects here. The ones that are highlighted are the ones that we are intending to apply for. Again, all of this is still in draft form, so I don't want you to get too hunkered down on the numbers or the exact form. We're still making some revisions based off of key conversations that we have in the next week or two with some of our GSPAC members and stakeholders. The biggest one that we are looking at approaching is our Adobe Creek Conjunctive Use Project, hopefully to get the planning and the implementation funding supported from that. So overall, we're asking for a little under 6 million for the SGM grant. We've had very close conversations with the state, leaning on their expertise and their recommendation. Again, we want to make this as competitive as possible, so still fine-tuning the numbers. And again, I just want to reiterate the support that we've received from the state. Not only did we receive the initial SGM planning grant, but we've also received facilitation support services, technical support services, and just overall guidance and support from the state. They've been a key, a key resource for us to utilize as we're complying with SIGMA. Now here, I am on the second part of the agenda items, so I'm going to pass it over to the Chair if you would like me to continue or how you would like to tackle this next part.
Any questions in the meantime, or, all right, go ahead and continue.
Oh, beans. All right. So the next part of the agenda, I am kindly requesting consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the Board of Directors of the Lake County Watershed Protection District acting as our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency to file a grant application for the implementation of our Big Valley GSP and authorize the Chair of the Board of Directors to sign. We do have the resolution here copied. You may notice that it looks very different than what we are used to seeing in terms of resolutions, but this was the template that is required by the state. They do state in the grant guidelines that if we deviate from this resolution that authorizes the GSA and for us to apply, then we, we risk possibly losing points on our application. So this is something that I would not like to deviate from because the more points that we lose, the less chance we have of receiving funding. So this is the resolution here. Of course, we filled it indicator to our Big Valley GSA and our grant application, but here is the resolution. Of course, I always like to leave my contact information, resources regarding our Big Valley GSP, and if you have any questions, give us a call, 707-263-2344, or come see us on the third floor. So I can go back to this slide, or whichever slide is preferred.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you for the update and also for this. I sure hope that we can get the funding. What I really like is the third part about the water recharge. It's, it's, I know that SIGMA as a whole has added a huge impact to water resources in order to conduct all the services needed to get the report, submitting it to the state, following all the mandates, but at the same time, there is a coincidence of it happens right during one of our really worst droughts, and we're not quite sure when we're going to get out of it. So I think it's, it's kind of a perfect storm of mandates that have come down from the state for us to really watch our water and make sure that there's longevity for our agricultural industry. We just got a crop report. That crop report requires us to watch our water to make sure that that can continue. But anyways, Component Number Three is the water recharge. I know you've talked about Proposition 68. Has Prop One been unleashed so that we can access? Because that was all about storage.
Yeah, so with this grant funding, again, this is from general funds from the state, they do utilize some They do utilize some of Prop One. That was also in the planning grant as well. So they are pooling different pools of money from Prop One, Prop 68 to utilize, and that is why there is such an emphasis on storage.
Good, good. Okay, no, I appreciate this. Hope we can get the full amount that we're looking for and looking forward to the next updates.
Thank you.
Just, I think you covered what I'm going to ask, but I'm going to ask it just to clarify the funding that, that we're applying for, that you're applying for. Is it going to assist? Because, you know, we have a myriad of different projects going on, and I'm pretty sure Water Resources budget has to expend that funding towards those. This will clear that up so that some of the other projects can go under general descriptions, if that makes sense?
Yeah, so this will, this ask will cover our compliance with SIGMA. So on top of our compliance with SIGMA, we also do groundwater monitoring for other groundwater basins. That does take up a lot of staff time and other resources as well, but this will cover the costs for our compliance with SIGMA, which, as you can see, it adds up. We have to do all of Task One, Task Two, and then, you know, the state is really emphasizing recharge projects. So if we don't do it now, we're going to have to do it sooner down the road, so.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. I personally appreciate the redundancy. As the new kid on the block, and I also appreciate you weren't available yesterday because of another commitment, so I want to thank Director DeLeon for pointing me to my homework, which I did attempt to do yesterday to catch up. Certainly, it's an interesting law, a heavy lift, especially in a small rural county with only a medium impacted thing. SGM was the hot button issue at CSAT, especially where I'm from, the Central Valley. Certainly, the need for some form of groundwater management is self-evident down there. However, the devil is in the details, and I think if I discovered the acronym correctly yesterday, it's PMAs, Projects and Management Actions.
Correct.
So on this particular spreadsheet, and I do appreciate it, I do notice some of those things starting to take some shape, including a, some form of a well management program, including an Adobe Creek Conjunctive Use Project I'm not familiar with, and then a short, long-term demand management actions. So just for my own benefit, and maybe for those who are just tuning in, again, everyone says let's save water, but when we get down to projects and management actions, I think that's where those who have not had the opportunity to tune in just yet, including myself, may express some concerns. So I certainly appreciate the need to get some money to do what has been wrought by the state. On the other hand, if we're seeking money to do things that may end up being inconvenient or disadvantage, disadvantageous to some of our Big Valley residents, you know, my need for speed isn't necessarily shared by the state. So you can just, can you just highlight for my benefit and for those tuning in what the specific PMAs are on this ask and how they help us comply with the state?
Yeah, so PMAs are Project Management Actions. That is a requirement of our Groundwater Sustainability Plan, and again, that's unique to each different groundwater basin. Our PMAs for our Big Valley basin were not pooled from thin air. I wish it was that easy, but it was not. So this took over a year of coordination with our stakeholders, with our consultants, doing some boots on the ground, studying, modeling, et cetera. So these PMAs are all outlined in a specific table under our GSP. There's a whole chapter and section on it that outlined what a PMA is, how do we get to identifying the high priority project management actions, actions, and how they're actually going to benefit our groundwater basin. So the PMAs that we have listed here, again, were pooled from our GSP. We can't really meander from that unless we have a good reason. So again, the PMAs that we have listed here, the number one priority in our ask, and it's going to be a hefty list or lift if we do get the funding for this, but the Adobe Creek Conjunctive Use Project, we at the Water Resources Department have been looking at this. Additional entities have been trying to seek funding for this, and a lot of interest is, is focused on actually doing the planning and the development implementation of our Adobe Creek Conjunctive Use Project. That was identified as one of the priority PMAs in our GSP. But basically, what a PMA is, is again, the state wants to see, okay, so you did all this planning, you outlined some data gaps, some, you know, different discrepancies in sustainability in your groundwater basin. What are you missing? What are the impacts to water, water availability in your groundwater basin? And looking forward to 2042, that is the deadline, when I brought to the board our GSP for adoption, I said that this is just the start of it. We had, you know, a year to plan for our GSP, but now we're actually doing the boots on the ground. And that's what our PMA, PMA is. When I say boots on the ground, I mean, what are we actually going to do? What are we going to construct? What are we going to see as that recharge, as that, as that capture of our groundwater, or of our groundwater in that basin to ensure that we have water moving forward and continued on throughout?
So to the, to the well management, for example, if there's a trigger event, we're in a third or fourth year of a drought emergency, I'm assuming well management would include at some point in order that certain wells be taken out of production?
I don't want to say just exactly yet, yet what that would be. That's what we're trying to decide, and that's going to take coordination between domestic well owners. So we have a seat on our Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee for domestic well owner. We have public meetings. This will also take very close coordination with the state, other county departments, such as Environmental Health, who actually takes in these well permits, and, you know, CDD as well. So this is going to take, you know, how that's, that's specifically going to look, but that's what we're asking, that's what we're asking the money for, is how to do these studies? What do we decide on? Because right now, we don't have that set in stone. We just developed our GSP. So the specifics of it, that's what we're requesting that funding for, is how can we get that? How can we move that forward?
Thank you for that. Certainly, there's a need for developing our well inventory, having spent some time in Environmental Health. Clearly, we need to know more about where our wells are and how they're performing. I just want to highlight the proposed, we're basically literally being charged with developing the tools of our own discontent when it comes to these management actions. And then, demand management actions in the third column. Is that a broader topic that wouldn't involve, you know, well, well, well-specific actions? What's a short and long-term demand management action?
So for that one, again, Component Three is just focused on recharge, so not necessarily dependent on wells, but just greater recharge opportunities. So you can see there are some other ones that are not necessarily highlighted, but for example, stormwater recharge, other opportunities to do more stormwater capture, recharge in our groundwater basin.
Thank you.
All right. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this side? I'm on the agenda. Please come up and state your name for the record, and we'll start your three minutes. Come on up, Joan.
I want to thank Marina Delagias. I became a member of the public officially, and I supplied Marina with a lot of public comment. And the public comment is very necessary for the law to come into being. I want to thank her for her patience. I learned Zoom. I didn't resign, and Marina hung in with me, and I'll try to submit my final comments before the 16th. It was really an experience. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody on Zoom? All right, I'll close public input at this time and bring it back to the board for further action.
Mr. Chair, I offered the resolution, yeah, resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. With that, the resolution has been approved, and thank you for the presentation, and I apologize for murdering your name as well, because I know it's Delagianis, and I keep saying Delagiani, so.
Well, that's how you pronounce it in Greek, so.
See, that's what I thought, and I, you know, I thought I was doing okay.
You're golden.
The silent S.
Yeah.
All right, well, with that, thank you, and we'll go ahead and take our lunch and come back at 1:00. All right. All right. Welcome back from our lunch break. We are going to go ahead and move on to our 6.6 item, Lake County Health Services Bimonthly Update. With that, we will invite Director Portney and Dr. Sporer up, so.
Good morning, Board. Good morning, community. Before I pass the microphone to Dr. Sporer to give a general health update for the county, I just wanted to provide a couple of updates for the department. So we have a couple of promotions and a new hire. We have a provisional Director of Nursing, Philip Wagner. Two promotions in our department are our new Deputy of Public Health, Aisha Miller, and our new Deputy of Health Services, Rainie Grafton. One thing that you should be excited about is on Friday, the leadership team is going to meet, and we're going to, with these new hires, establish a new org chart and chain of command, so we have a great system flow for our department. To, and the reason why we're needing to do this is because we are, have two new open positions and recruits that are closing here soon, that we've got ample great candidates for, and that's our Health Equity Coordinator and our Epidemiologist, which we're really excited about. Outside of that, some pending developments and contracts. Well Path, thank you County Council for supporting the process for Joe Medical and getting that done. Spoke with David this morning, who facilitates Joe Medical, and their leadership team has signed the contract, and they're going to be hopefully delivering that to us by the end of the day to present to you. And our Blue Zone, our collaboration with Blue Zone is growing at a nice rate, looking at tobacco policy, discussions within the county, looking at tobacco retail licenses, and how we can potentially reduce mortality by looking at how we're monitoring, tracking, and allowing access to tobacco products in the county. And with that, and if there aren't other questions, I would like to allow Dr. Sporer to give a further public health update on current events.
All right.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Board, for letting me be here today. I was here two months ago saying how nice everything was, but now it's not so nice. We've seen a sort of a triple epidemic coming up upon our community. We're holding our own at the two hospitals, but what you've heard about nationally is the RSV, the Respiratory Syncytial Virus, which is getting, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's someone.
Respiratory Syncytial Virus, which is causing a lot of pediatric hospitalizations. All our pediatric hospitals are, are packed across the country at this moment, and everybody's working overtime. Fortunately, at our hospitals, I met with them, we meet with them every two weeks to see how they're doing with the RSV, and so far, they've only had one or two patients who needed to be transported out, and they were able to find rooms for them. So it hasn't impacted our community to this point. We think we're probably going to peak in the next couple of weeks with RSV and then start to go down. In addition to that, we also have probably one of the worst flu seasons we've had in 15 years or so. So we recommend people to get their flu vaccinations if they can. That's causing about a 20, 25% increase in admission rates across adult hospitals, so we're going to see some strain here as we get into the new year. At the same time, we're starting to see about a 10, 15% rise in, in COVID and coronavirus across the country. We're seeing some people, more people getting admitted. So we worry about having the sort of, having the two flus and COVID at the same time causing hospitalizations to go up. I don't think it's going to be New York City three years ago, but I think it'll be a tough winter to get through, as we've had them commonly, and we'll, we'll work with it, with the, with the hospitals here to get through this. Hospitals are generally, we've been working with the state. Several things are happening, the COVID, state of emergencies ending at the end of February. They're gearing up for flu, Tamiflu, other things available for, for our patients who need it, and working with, trying to help with the transport of patients from one place to the other, which is one thing we need a lot in Lake County. So get your vaccines if you can, please. I got mine, it was pretty easy at Walgreens, so I'd be happy to take any questions.
Supervisor Piska.
So I, I, in the past, we've had trouble when people on the weekends get sick or need their doctors, and a lot of our doctors in county don't have on-call physicians, which is something I got to experience again last weekend. And it's really frustrating, but Adventist is opening a clinic, the Urgent Care Clinic, the second week in January, which is the one and only urgent care clinic that we're going to have in county. And I think that's going to be really helpful for those, we, I don't know about you, but everybody in my family gets sick on Friday afternoon.
Hmm, yes.
And we always have to, we're always directed to go to the ER, and that's not a good situation. So it is something that we've spoken with Director Portney about, is having urgent care in the county. I'm really excited. Can't wait for it to get here soon enough. I think it's, do you know the date? January 8th or 9th, I think?
The New Year's, the New Year's.
It's the second week, I remember that, because I was delirious when I got the news. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of that, and then also, if you could give some guidance when people are sick and they don't know if it's the flu, or if it's COVID, or, you know, kind of how, what to do and how to tell the difference, if, if you have any input for the public on that, that'd be really helpful.
Okay, I think we have something we could share.
Okay.
Supervisor Green, and then Supervisor Sabatier afterwards.
Yeah, maybe more for Director Portney, but I'm glad that in general, our pharmacies have some supply of vaccines, but sometimes, standing in line and getting all that done, people can come in with the best of intentions and then wander out before they get their shot, myself included. So it's been very helpful, at least for the clinics we've been having for the COVID-19 boosters here, even though I know attendance is spotty. Do we have any capacity? What's our current vaccine supply? And is any capacity that we could stand up clinics, at least for county employees? I mean, we are disaster workers, we want to stay resilient, but, you know, is there any, other than pharmacy supplies, whatever you can glom out of your family doctor, what can we do to stand up broader access to flu vaccines?
Yes, Supervisor Green, we have a partnership with, drawing a blank on their name.
Optum?
Optum, yes, OptumServe.
Optum Serve.
Who provides vaccines for the county, and usually, when we have extra vaccine or reserve vaccine, we send a county-wide email to let them know how many vaccines we have, and then we invite them to the Health Department to reserve those. And we will continue as long as the state allows us to leverage Optum to continue to provide that service. For example, on Mondays, we actually have a man that does testing and treatment at the Lake County Health Department. So residents are more than welcome to come by on Mondays to access those services and get connected. They're also welcome to call the Health Department to see when we have extra vaccines available, and we can set up time for them, and we have reserve to be able to do that.
Thank you.
As well as leveraging our pharmacies, CVS, and our other partners.
All right, Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, just curious, the, you spoke about the RSV and the flu and COVID. You did mention a little bit about our local hospitals, but as far as their capacity, they're able to handle exactly what's happening right now, other than obviously the higher level of care needs to be transported out of county.
Right, we're seeing a little bit of an increase in the transports out and the facility transports, but not huge. They're able to handle what they have. Our ICU capacity is about eight beds, we have two empty right now, so we're handling it at this point.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Open it up to public input here at this time. It looks like we have someone in chambers, so if you'd like to come up to the microphone and state your name for the record, we'll start your three minutes.
I want you all to know that, according to the press, Dr. Fauci has given a deposition, and Mr., our president and Dr. Fauci are being sued by two states, the state of Missouri and the state of Louisiana. And they are giving depositions presently over the misinformation and censorship by by the media. So there's two sides to every story, and I'm sorry, but I'm here to give you the other side. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. All right, is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to speak on this item? If not, I'll go to Zoom. I don't see any hands up in Zoom as of now. All right, so we'll close public input and bring it back to the Board. It looks like we have what, it's just a report, so there's no other questions. Thank you for the report, and we'll see you at the next update. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we'll move on to our 7.3, review and consider process to appoint permanent sheriff/coroner to serve until January 2nd, 2025. And with that, I'll give the floor to Cao Parker, and then we'll go from there.
Yes, I respectfully request that Sheriff Martin join us up here, so he can make his own announcement. I felt, I felt funny trying to, making the announcement with him sitting in the back.
Usually after No Shave November is over, that goes away.
It's Don't Shave December.
Retirement must be nice.
Don't ask him about the gray hairs.
Alliterations going on. Thank you for hearing this item, Board. As you're aware, I've noticed the Board's intention to retire effective December 31st. My last day will be December 30th, serving as Sheriff/Coroner of the County of Lake. The term for next year and the next session starts on January 3rd. Per the government code, when there's a vacancy in the Office of Sheriff, it is to be filled by the person next in line of authority. If there's not an undersheriff, a chief of staff, or another designated person, none of which we have at our office. The person next in line of authority by virtue of his rank and appointment date and current assignment will be Captain Christopher Chikowski. And pursuant to the government code, he will act as the, he will carry out the duties, functions, responsibilities of the sheriff until such appointment is made. This item is brought to you to obviously consider the process for hiring a, appointing the next sheriff.
Ooh, sorry.
I'm certainly not here to influence your decision on who that might be, but I do want to take some time to encourage you to go through this process as expeditiously as possible. I think it's important to have the amount of time that we're, the sheriff's office is left without a recognized appointed and elected sheriff as much as possible. There is some training that's coming up that the California State Sheriff's Association puts on only once every four years, its New Sheriff's Training, and is scheduled for January 6th of 2023. If we're, if the Board is able to identify and appoint whoever that next sheriff will be prior to that time, I've already reserved a slot for the sheriff to attend that training. The sheriff will benefit greatly from attending that training, and again, it's only put on once every four years, so it's probably going to be a once opportunity, at least until the next election cycle. The other reason I think it's important to, to do this quickly is to allow whoever the Board identifies as the appointed sheriff to spend some time, if they like, with me in order to facilitate a smooth transition. There are pending personnel matters, there are pending contracts that are under review and in various stages of, of the process. And to be able to spend some time with me to go over some of those things is going to be a great benefit to whoever the next sheriff will be. Will also serve as a great benefit to the Board of Supervisors and the public to have that smooth transition. And also, and not, not leastly important, be important to the men and women that serve at the sheriff's office to have an identified leader in place. The process that is being proposed, I think is a good one, to go promotional only. There are a number of people that are currently employed by the county as peace officers that already meet the statutory qualifications to run for sheriff. The benefit of appointing somebody who is currently serving as a peace officer with the County of Lake is we already know that they meet the minimum legal requirements to be a peace officer in California, so any vetting would not need to be done. The only vetting that would need to be done is to make sure that the person meets the other legally required qualifications to run sheriff, to be the sheriff, which include residency and a combination of time in service as a peace officer, as well as education. With, and I don't want to get on the minutia of all that is, but that's, it shouldn't take but a couple of minutes to determine whether or not somebody meets the qualifications to run for sheriff. With that, I would entertain any questions that the Board might have.
Supervisor Siboti?
Thank you very much for presenting that, and I appreciate this being put on the agenda as well. We do need to take quick action. I appreciate that on there, it has the idea of doing interviews by December 20th. I think that could be timely, wish it would be earlier, but I think that we need to give time for applications. The only thing, there's one thing I want to check and one thing I'd like to expand on. First, I don't know that we can say promotional since it's a elected position, but it's moving into the position, basically. But it would be from internal for the County of Lake, as long as you meet the qualifications, correct?
I believe the term promotional simply refers to the process of human resources used to announce recruitments. One of the benefits of doing promotional is, as I said earlier, if it's only open to people who are current county employees and that are serving as peace officers, you already know they meet that requirement. And it also reduces the amount of time that the HR process has to accept applications from a minimum of 10 with an open recruitment to a minimum of five days with a promotional recruitment. So if you're looking to do this in a quick manner, it's not necessarily, it's a promotion for anybody, whoever gets it. Some might wonder if it actually was, in fact, but I think it has more to do, and I might be misinterpreting that, but I think it has more to do with the timeframes that are available for people to submit applications.
Ms. Grant.
I think the point that both are making is that your Board can determine this to be an internal process, if you wish, so that you would call candidates from within the ranks of existing county employees, and that's certainly up to you. The, the use of the word promotional fits better for recruitment, which this technically isn't, because you're not recruiting an employee. Once this person is appointed, they will assume elective office for a period of time. So it's, it's one of those things that lawyers parse out that people don't like, but.
And then in a separate.
Pam, so I just wanted to make before you, Pam, did you have something to add to that, or?
No, I was just going to confirm Brian's assertion that the promotional is just a period of time, five days for internal candidates only, and per our recruitment rules.
Okay, go ahead, Supervisor Siboti.
I just wanted to also, it alludes to it in the memo, but I want to make sure it's very obvious that the interviews would be public in front of the Board of Supervisors and the public, not in closed session, like we would typically see. It said "public interview," but I just wanted to make sure it was kind of described a little bit better, so everyone understood what that was. I'm wondering if it's possible, just because your position is a very important position. And I, I know that, I wish we could have had this conversation earlier, but we're here today. And I know I've talked with our Cao about timelines between now and 12/20, and I'm wondering if maybe expanding it to 10 days to make sure that we give good amount of time for, because obviously, people should have been thinking about this as soon as that your letter came out, which came out at least a month ago or so. But this is not a specifically personal matter, this is, this is a family matter. You have to talk with those that surround you, because it will affect those that surround you. Obviously, you got to fill out the application, provide everything that's needed, but I just want to make sure that we not just show the public, but do the right thing, which is, we want to make sure we have the qualified applicants in front of us to make the best decision and not rush through in five days. If we do it in 10 days, I've been told that it's still possible that, to meet the 12/20 interview date, and that's what I'm asking for the rest of the Board, what their thoughts are on expanding that from five to 10.
Go first. Supervisor Simon.
You know, I think you hit it on the point. Sheriff Martin obviously resigned, like I said, a month ago. Someone was thinking about doing this, they knew the process.
Retired.
Sorry, retired, I apologize. Wordsmithing my, in the bad way, sorry. Retired. So as we move forward here, sorry about that, Brian. As we move forward, I'm okay with the five days. I mean, at least that's my thoughts on it. Stick with the five days. I like the conversation of the internal candidates, so we know that they're already qualified, and so, yes, about the five day, 10 days, I'm good with five.
I would, I would propose that anybody who meets the eligibility requirements or the legally required criteria to hold the office has probably given it enough thought at this point, with my announcement coming out in late October. So I think anybody who's going to be in has made a decision whether, whether or not they're going to.
You didn't have to do it on my birthday.
Sorry.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I want to thank County Council and Cao Parker for spending some time with me yesterday. This is a fairly complicated item, and there's two moving pieces, although we're only looking at one on this particular agenda item. So I believe we're going to be looking at appointing an interim for that awkward period of days between December 30th and the start of the next term Sheriff Martin was elected to. And then what's on the agenda here is how to interview candidates for the quote-unquote "permanent," not, not the best word I would have used, but basically, the incoming sheriff/ coroner, who would replace the interim, who, last I heard, has to be Captain Chris, just based on the current understanding of who the next senior officer is. So I think that interim appointment will come before us, and that will kind of take care of itself. The question here is, who's going to follow? I, I do not agree that doing a short promotional-only flying for this position is in the best interest of this county, or this department, for that matter. And that's no disrespect for those people who might be qualified, who might meet the minimum qualifications for this office. This office has been under duress for several years. Obviously, if there are people from within the ranks who are qualified, and you can step up and handle some of the very daunting challenges here, we'd love to hear from them. I don't personally support the idea that we would do that on a short leash, on a five or 10-day window. I do think, when we talk about appointing the quote-unquote "permanent sheriff" for the next two years, that we have the opportunity to do an open recruitment, to be able to interview candidates from outside the department. And I, I think that's just due diligence at its very minimum, notwithstanding the need to get somebody in place for continuity of, of operations. Again, that interim that we're going to be appointing, which would be Captain Chris, there's not time limited to that interim appointment. We can take our time, and I would argue that we should take our time to conduct that due diligence, to make sure we attract the most highly qualified candidate, be it a person from within the department or outside the agency.
So a couple of things, I would disagree with you on your classification or categorization of the department being under just duress for the last several years. I'm pretty proud of how the department's been running for the last eight years, and I think I'm leaving it in a lot better shape than it was. So I'll disagree with that comment. This is not going to limit candidates that are just coming from the department. This open recruitment's from anybody within the county that meets the qualifications. In addition to the sheriff's office, you have the district attorney's office, who has peace officers, who might meet the eligibility requirements. You have some people who work at the probation department that might meet the qualifications, and there might be some other people in other job classifications within the county that, that we're not aware of that could meet the qualifications as well. So it's not simply choosing from within the sheriff's department. It does give other people within the county the opportunity to do that.
Did you mean within the county, you mean?
Within county employment.
Big C, not little c.
Yeah, within county employment.
Okay, and so, Vice Chair, did you have?
I just have a question about process. And if it was opened up beyond the county, then that person, if they were hired outside of the county, would they have to go through all the background checks and everything that, no, because it's an elected position, or yes? I just, I'm not sure.
Well, that's up to your Board. I mean, when you're appointing somebody, you can determine the criteria for the appointment, but you're, you're primarily, in terms of qualifications, it's those that are statutorily set.
Okay, because I wouldn't want to lose time if we had to go through a 30-day background check, or any of those things that we would do. We need to have the sheriff in place as soon as possible.
All right, so I think.
You'd probably want to do some rudimentary background.
Well, that's why I think the five days is good, then we can get the applicants, there can be some background checking and vetting before we have our interviews on the day of the 20th.
Right, and, and I'll just add in, because I know it was asked of our opinions, and I feel like continuity of anybody that's with the five days, considering the folks that are applying or potentially applying, I think continuity of folks that are already intact would help the department kind of move forward for, for that. And I feel like also that if somebody was to run against the sheriff this year, they would have already, you know, indicated that they were ready for this, and since there was no opposition, I think we can just move forward with the five days and go from there. So, yeah. Supervisor Siboti?
So I'm not married to the idea of 10 days, it could be five days. I was just proposing it. Some people may be on vacation, I don't know, I just want to make sure that it's available to any and all within the county agency. But I will say that having an interim for too long, being an interim, there's certain safeguards that don't allow you to make certain changes that maybe you feel need to happen. So the longer that occurs, the harder and more difficult the job becomes. And so I'd love, I think that if we venture past January 2nd without having selected a next sheriff, that's not good on us. We need to make sure that there's continuity with a sheriff, not an interim sheriff, in that position. So that, that's, I'm good with the five days, if that's the way the Board goes.
Right. Supervisor Green?
One, just want to clarify my comments about duress. In my view, all of our law enforcement agencies are under some degree of distress. Vacancy rates are crazy. You know, clearly, just lost another police chief, now here we are, losing our sheriff by resignation.
I started that retirement, I apologize. I truly do, it was right in front of me.
Well, retirement, but should be stated resignation from the elected term. And so the timing of this could have been handled better. Again, the complexity of this office involves budgeting, management, things that maybe some line-level employees may not have strengths in. The sheer fact that we can't appoint an undersheriff or other people that are actually outlined in the government code shows that we have a leadership gap in this particular department. We have peace officers outside county employment who are working in this county, and we have peace officers working in adjacent counties. I think we short-circuit, I think we short-circuit our due diligence if we are just looking internally only, if we do it on a short timeline, and if we do it out of a sense of desperation, rather than a sense of wisdom and creativity and looking for the very, very best candidate, wherever that may person may work presently. And I'll just leave those comments at that.
And the Board also has the ability not to select anybody on the first go-around. If you find your pool of applicants that come from within county employment, or somebody that the Board would feel comfortable appointing, they could simply go through the process again.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I just want to, once again, I apologize for saying, that one got me, I was right in front of you too, sorry about that, Brian. So the thought here, at least my way of thinking things, we're just being asked, you know, for this, this timeframe, to give an opportunity for somebody potentially here locally, or in the department, or in county employment, for kind of a two-year interview. I think you understand a long interview process, coming onboard here with, with this Board and being selected. We're selecting someone to just keep us moving in the right direction, hopefully. The voters will choose in two years who the sheriff of Lake County is, and that's up to any individual who may run a run for sheriff. The person we appoint, even if they're really good, may not be the sheriff that's elected in 2024. So from, from my train of thought is making sure that we continue moving forward expeditiously. I think that is in our purview and, and the thing to do for our county and our constituents, and also for the department. So, you know, those are my thoughts on it, and I just want to make it very clear, we may appoint somebody who we think does a great job in the next two years, they run for office and they don't win. Or the rest of the constituents of this county will decide the sheriff in 2024. And it's really, we're just doing our governmental duty to get us to that point.
Ms. Grant?
If I may, just to clarify, and certainly for the, the individual who will be discharged If I may, just to clarify, and certainly for the, the individual who will be discharging the duties of, of the sheriff temporarily under 24105, that's until the vacancy is filled. But it is, again, it's a temporary discharge, it's not intended to confer really the auspices of sheriff other than just function. The, your board's appointment, however, will confer all of those responsibilities and it will be, as I said, an elected position for all intent and purpose from the time of the appointment. The, just going back in terms of being able to check history, I would recommend your board have some mechanism to, to check because normally when this goes to election, the voters have the opportunity to do that vetting. So in the case of the appointment, it's, it's, it makes as much sense to do that as the reason you have the interviews in public so that the public has the opportunity to see along with you who is interviewing.
All right.
All right. I will just say, I'm so glad we're making a decision for a two-year term rather than a six-year term, because that would be a much more difficult decision when that decision should be held in the hands of the public.
Yep.
And really, we might know in 15, 16 months when the next presidential primary is, it's possible it could have the next elected sheriff identified at that time.
Not to mention worrying about a coroner on the side with that one, you know, probably say, we don't have to worry about that now either, so. All right, so I'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this item, please come up to the microphone or raise your hand on Zoom. All right, with that, I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion or action.
Is it direction or action?
Direction, sorry.
So a consensus on direction?
Open up internal applications for the county agency and five days and come back on December 20th.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye, yes.
Good with that.
All right. Looks like we have that direction. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our agenda, I think, except for, except for, of course, closed session. So with that, wait, I'm going to make sure, because I, we're all looking, we're all looking. Okay, yeah, because consent agenda didn't, we didn't have to pull anything, so we're good on that.
I know, it's rare.
All right. So we got closed session. 8.1, public employee evaluation, title Health Services Director. And 8.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1, citizens for environmental protection and responsible planning at all versus County of Lake at all. 8.3, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1, flesh first County of Lake at all. 8.4, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D2E1, one potential case. And with that, we'll go into closed session?
Mr. Sheriff, if I may?
Yes.
8.2 and 8.3 will not be heard today, they're not ready.
Okay, so we're basically 8.1 and 8.4 we'll be doing on closed session. So we'll see you after closed session. If there's no action, we'll go from there. So, all right.